Good evening, everyone. We've got a full house and I'm sure others are watching the meeting from the comfort of their air-conditioned homes. I welcome them to. I appreciate it when the town gets involved in the business of the town. This is your town and we are here to work for you. So I appreciate everyone's attention. So I'll call the meeting to order and if we could start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilman Chirillo.
Please bow your heads. Gracious and loving God, we come before you tonight as humble servants of this community. We thank you for the privilege and the responsibility of leadership and for the trust placed in each of us but a people of Oak Island. Please watch over the victims, the missing persons and their families, as well as the first responders in the tragic Texas floods. May we listen to one another with open hearts. May we speak with respect even when we disagree. We ask for healing where there has been hurt. Let us not be defined by our divisions but by our shared love for this town and our desire to see it thrive. Guide us to identify solutions that lift up every voice and lead to outcomes where no one must lose so that another may win. God bless our mayor, our council members, our staff and all of us who call Oak Island home. Grant us courage, patience and compassion that we may serve with integrity and kindness. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Bob. That still gives me goosebumps.
I don't think you should start with a prayer because it should be something that stands out. That's what I have to say.
I'm sorry, but you're out of order.
All right. I feel that we're out of order.
So we begin tonight with presentations and it is my pleasure to introduce to you Dean Vedder, who is the founding dean of UNCW's College of Science and Engineering, who UNCW is bringing us two proposals tonight for council's consideration. And Dean, thank you so much and the staff for being here and I look forward to hearing what you have to offer us this evening.
Thank you and thank you for having us, Mayor White, council members.
Maybe I'll start with introducing the folks that have come with me. Troy Elfin, who works in our Department of Biology and Marine Biology. Lindsay Crichton, who's our senior director of development for the College of Science and Engineering. And Dr. Amy Reamer, who's the director of engineering programs at UNC Wilmington. So thank you for coming. So I thought I would start tonight by just giving you a brief overview of the university and then we'll get into the College of Science and Engineering. I realize that many of you may not realize how large our institution has grown and some of the sort of initiatives that we're taking and areas that we're trying to grow, which includes more community engagement. And so our chancellor was at our institution before as the College of Arts and Sciences and then went to Elon for provost and when he came back as our chancellor, he said we need to open our college up more to the public. And so that's one of the things that we're trying to do. So UNCW has almost 18,000 students as of last year. We think we're going to break 20,000 students this year. This fall incoming class looks very large. Almost 1,000 more students have signed up to come for fall classes. So with that comes challenges, right? We're constantly building and growing and adding parking and dormitories and things like that. The university itself is fairly young. It started in 1947, but we do have already 106 alumni. We have over 2,300 permanent faculty and staff, so we're one of the largest employers in New Hanover County. Our retention rate with students who come to UNCW and then stay for their second year is at 88%. This year it's even close to 90. That's very, very high, one of the highest in the UNC system, by the way. So when we get students, they really like it and they continue to stay. Our main campus has 170 buildings on it and I'll show you a picture here in a second. We're known as North Carolina's Coastal University, so it fits with Oak Island as well, being on the coast. And we're also, as you know, a historic city. Our first graduating class was in 1949. If you don't know, the university was set up basically to handle people coming back from World War II. So the first class had 238 students and now we're at almost 20,000. So it's grown tremendously. Back in 2000, we constructed the Center for Marine Science, which is a facility of about 100,000 square feet. I'll show you an overview of that on the next slide as well. That was opened in 2000. It's right on the intercoastal waterway. And I would like to invite all of you and all the citizens, actually, of Oak Island. We're going to have an open house the first Saturday of October, I believe it's October 3rd, from 10:00 to 2:00. Open house means exactly that. Come, bring your families, bring friends. You can tour the facilities or we'll be people there to tell you what's going on. You can see a shellfish hatchery in action. You can see our marine biotech center. You can see our underwater sea vehicles, all that kind of stuff, right there at the Center for Marine Science. So I'll be happy to host you there. We established our first doctoral program in marine biology, actually, back in 2002. In 2019, we started to do engineering. We've had an NC State program, a two-plus-two, where they came to UNCW for two years and then would go to NC State for their last two years. Well, we now have our own engineering programs. As a matter of fact, we started the first Bachelor of Science program in coastal engineering in the country. Surprisingly, no one had a program like that. It's that program and others that we're going to support some of the initiatives that we'd like to work on with you going forward. We also just opened in addition to our library. If you ever want to tour the university, it's open all day. It's open on Saturdays as well. You can come and tour. The library is a $68 million expansion opened last year. It is spectacular. I'd encourage you, if you come, it's open to the public. You can go get a tour and see what that has to offer. So this is our main campus on the left from 2022. When you have an area like this, it makes you realize how close we are to the water and how sensitive environmental and coastal issues are to us as an institution. So you're going to hear that in some of what I talk about tonight. On the right side is our Myrtle Grove campus. That's where the Center for Marine Science is. Again, about 65 acres, 100,000 square feet of lab space. All of the faculty that work in the College of Science and Engineering that I lead work there. Those are their basic laboratories where they work with students. They do most of their teaching on the main campus. In terms of colleges, again, I'm the dean of the College of Science and Engineering, but there's other colleges like the School of Business, Health and Human Services, Humanities, Social Sciences and the Arts, the Watson College of Education and also the Graduate School. We have about 3,500 graduate students now as well, so that's a growing area. It's growing by something like 65% this year. So you can see tremendous interest in the graduate programs that we offer. As I mentioned before, we're starting engineering. We started with coastal engineering. We now also have intelligence systems engineering and that's a program where you have sensors, Internet of Things kinds of devices. You program refrigerators, garage door openers, things like that. As you can tell, that's an emerging area. Everything has software in it today. And so those students are actually going to be working in the marine environment, right? Creating sensors that we can put in our waterways to maybe distinguish, for example, boat traffic, just based on how the engines sound. So it's things like that. The third engineering program, we started last year with software engineering and we're going to do adding a couple more in the coming years as well. We also have lots of other programs in different areas. Creative writing, by the way, is one of the top five in the country. UNCW is known for that. The other programs, of course, in our marine biology and marine science areas are also considered in the top tier in the country. Let's see. There we go. So just a couple highlights from the College of Science and Engineering. It was created about two years ago. It was a split from what was the College of Arts and Sciences into two units. The larger college had 27 departments. This new college has nine units, or academic departments and units. So it's much more manageable. Having that many direct reports became a little unwieldy. But we have one of the largest wave flumes on the East Coast. It's 80 feet. It's in a building that we built just for it and you can generate waves of various periods and you can watch, for example, how sand comes on and off of a beach. You change the period, you can watch. And so we use that to teach students. So that would be worth something if you ever want to see. Let me know. I'd be happy to give you a tour. It's not far from my office, actually. The Marine Science and Coastal Engineering area I mentioned, that's really a highlight for UNCW. We're also getting a new ship for them. It's going to be a 73-foot vessel that will be here late next year of 2026. It's being built now in Seattle or somewhere like that. We've been out there to see it, but they're about halfway finished with it right now. So that'll be nice because we can put 24 staff and crew on and they can go take students out for several nights at a time. We're doing work, for example, with flu vaccines. You've probably all heard of MNRA vaccines. You have to store them at really cold temperatures. This faculty member in our chemistry department has found a way to store it at like freezer temperatures, like 60 Fahrenheit, rather than the super, super cold. So that's really exciting. He started a company around that as well. And then last bullet I'll just mention is, you know, we are interested in tackling regional and industry challenges, some of the challenges you're having here with your town as well, whether it's with sand or coastal issues, erosion, wildlife, fisheries, all kinds of areas. We have faculty in all of those areas. So in the college alone, we have 205 faculty and staff, 200 faculty, 115 staff, about 3,700 students, just in this college alone. So with that, I'm going to ask Troy Elfin to get up and talk a little bit about some of the work we've done with others here in this region and sort of some of the proposals we have forward that were in the MOU that you mentioned, Dr.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to come to speak with you guys today about something that's really, I'm very passionate about. It's living shorelines, but it's more than that. It's just utilizing this method of addressing coastal erosion to actually promote community engagement, citizen scientist, as well as environmental education. And we've been working on this issue for a number of years. So I must tell you that when I started working at UNCW, we were wringing our hands because by the projection was that by 2030, 50% of the US population would live within 50 miles of the coast. Congratulations, we're overachievers. According to the data, 60% of the US population actually lives in a coastal county. If, and I am sure it would not come as a surprise to you that on any given day, they're on the roads right out here, right? But beyond that, they're in our waterways. And so what we've seen is that with increased utilization of our coastal waterways, we lose a lot of the natural areas. Erosion of coastal marshes leads to loss of sediments. It leads to loss of marsh coverage. That reduces the amount of critical habitat, which supports many of the fishery species that we're interested in maintaining and enhancing and promoting. It is what brings many of the folks to our coastal areas. And with that, we've also lost ecosystem services. What is that? That's the nutrient processing, the ability to take pollutants and nutrients out of the water that runs off when we have a storm. And so we're trying to figure out ways to address that. Living shorelines is an interesting way to approach this question. Basically, you use a biogenic structure, a nature-based structure to replace an eroded shoreline. It makes sure that you have that connection between the upland and the adjacent waterway and you don't lose those ecosystem services. More importantly, these things aren't static. So once you put a marsh in place, once you put a living shoreline in place, the next generation settles on top of the previous one and so they can respond to changing conditions. Our researchers and our colleagues up and down the state have been looking at this study for quite some time and one of the things that they found was that, here's a living shoreline that was established up near Carteret. This was in 2003. When they went back in 2014, they found that that living shoreline had accreted or changed the elevation of the marsh by four millimeters a year. That's really important when you consider sea level rise averages about three millimeters a year. So these living shorelines can respond to those natural conditions as they change. And unlike hardened structures, you know, they're flexible. They can respond. We, our group, our lab group is focused on living shorelines and different approaches to living shoreline. So I will say, when I started doing this work, no one knew what a living shoreline was. A testament to our work over the last 20 years, as of 2021, if you go and pull a KAMA permit, it's a checkbox on the KAMA permit now. People understand what it is. Coastal engineers understand what it is. Construction companies understand. We're interested in looking at different approaches to addressing coastal erosion. The first image that you see up there is shell bags. That is the material that we used originally. It allows us to get the community involved. They are able to put the bags in the shells, to build the reef, to get involved. But in more recent years, we have some very interesting sustainable methods that have come along. One of those is, the picture on the lower left is Sandbar Oyster Company, a recently-formed company, makes a sustainable material that basically in the next 10 years will degrade and that'll be gone and you'll be left with nothing but oysters. Native Shorelines, another company in our area, makes a material that they can put out that's also a biogenic structure, that also enhances ecosystem services. These are really very different approaches and we don't know how they'll work in the various conditions that they'll be settled within, which is why we're looking at a partnership with Oak Island. We want to do a three-year effort here where we want to first examine some of the areas up and down the waterway where we're seeing evidence of coastal erosion. We want to review the sites in partnership with the community and implement some of these approaches side by side so that we can understand that based on the conditions at the site, which of these approaches might work better in evaluating, in mitigating either coastal erosion, sediment trapping, ecosystem services or habitat provision. We would spend the first year evaluating sites and getting input, gathering that initial data and review. Year two, we would basically be gathering data and discussing how things are working with year three being an analysis and a series of recommendations. This wouldn't be done in a box. This would be done right here in the community. It would be done with the community. We would actually want to be able to have citizen scientist projects. What's a citizen scientist program? That's where we get volunteers from the community, those that are interested, to come out and work side by side with our students, with our staff and with our faculty. What we're interested in doing here is that as we do our work, we want them to understand and take really possession of this kind of approach to mitigating coastal erosion. We provide opportunities for them to come out and put hands on, to get involved. The image that you see on these lower images, this is from an event that took place in the local area. In fact, that image is from yesterday's event just across the waterway. So we've been doing this for a number of years. Also, in a three-year project, this allows us to evaluate how this approach is working and maybe go out and provide opportunities to seek grant funding to do some additional work in partnership with the community. Our idea here is not that it would be UNCW's grant. It would be a grant between ourselves and the university and the community to actually address emerging needs. And there are a number of grant programs out there that focus on these exact kinds of issues. Beyond that, I believe the town has been approached about actually getting involved with a three-year project to look at regional sand management. I've worked with the doctors that are involved in that project on the frying pan shoals project. And so this might provide a great opportunity for transmission of information back and forth, but also get some of the same students working on the beach and the sand as well as in the waterway. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from council for either Dean Vedder or Dr. Elfin? Those are the last two. Go ahead.
I have provided you with some material there. If you want to share that with the rest of the council so they can see what happens when we move from sustainable material, from a non-sustainable material to a sustainable material.
Do you want to explain what they are or color?
I was just about to jump in. So the black plastic, the black material that you get, if you run that through your hands and feel, that's plastic, right? Breaks my heart to have to use it, but that was the material, that was all we had when we started. That green material, can you feel the difference between those two? That is a compostable material made by a company that just emerged within the last few years. Super exciting that we're getting to use that and test that. The white material, what do you think about that?
It almost feels like kind of in-between.
It does feel like that. That is 100% starch and that comes from a company out of the Netherlands. They're interested in providing sustainable solutions for coastal problems. It's a silly thing, but can you imagine not putting that material in our waterways? And at the end of 10 years, there's nothing left. So thank you for letting me share that with you guys. Any other questions?
Just curious, how long will the initial analysis take?
For, once we start gathering data, well, the reality is, as soon as we can get a set of samples in the water, some samples of these different approaches, we'll begin to gather data on them almost immediately. So it'll be an iterative process once we get everything in place. Currently, we look at sediment, oyster sediment. We look at nectar, that's all the shrimp and fish and things that come around these things. So we would be looking at that. We would also be looking at sediment accumulation, both in front of and behind these structures. In some areas, you may want to use a shell bag type design. In other areas, you may want to use one of the other engineered designs.
Yeah, I understand it's variable based on the conditions that you're observing. I'm just curious, from the point of launching into analysis and then into deploying a strategy, can you give me a time, are we in year two at that point?
So we would probably, by the end of year one, we would be putting things in the water, right? So we need, we're looking around, we're constantly looking for opportunities where these materials might be useful, where we could make a good comparison. No one else is comparing these types of sustainable structures side by side. There are plenty of studies where someone's designed it and said, hey, I put this out, this is how it worked. We don't have any colleagues yet that have put them side by side and said, how do they work relative to each other? So our actual approach would be to start from day one, as soon as we're getting data to begin to look at it. It may be that some of those approaches capture larvae very quickly. Others may be slower. In the end, does it make a difference at the end of three years? We won't know until we get them in the water. But that's the kind of question I'm always interested in, right? I'm also interested in where's it getting the sediment from, right? Is it trapping it from the waterway? So we're taking something that's washed from another beach or are we simply trapping what's coming from our uplands down? And so that's another set of questions. We've got colleagues that are all interested in that.
Thank you.
Elementary question. The netting, does that stop the infestation from coming to the shore or does it help keep the vegetation from being disturbed?
So that material right there just holds the shells in place so that the larvae can settle on them. Each generation, each baby larva, each baby oyster needs an adult oyster shell to settle on. Most people don't realize that when we harvest our oysters, we take our habitat with it. So that material keeps it in place, giving enough time for the larvae to settle year beyond year. In the end, we hope that it'll stabilize the sediment enough so that the marsh will move out and grow to that point. Our colleagues at Chapel Hill and other folks have done some studies with us that show that an oyster reef with a marsh behind it can chew up the majority of wave energy generated by boat wakes and moderate storm surges. Now, nothing's going to stop a Hurricane Florence-type surge, but we're talking about the waterways and things like that.
So if I may add to that, I know we've talked about Dr. Elfin and with Catherine. One of the main benefits of doing this work is that approaching year three, we'll be able to, in whatever environments we choose, two different environments that replicate or mirror what we have along the ICW, we'll be able to, with a degree of confidence, know what methods we would want to employ to stabilize our ICW. And we won't be guessing. We won't be investing in something that we don't know whether or not it would work. We'll be able to advise homeowners as to what they can use on their shorelines to, with a high degree of confidence, that will work for them too. And there are plenty of grants, not only for municipalities like ourselves, but I know Mr. Martin has done work at his home, at his shoreline, and has used a grant to help make that happen. So we're very excited about the impact of the studies that we're talking about today. It's good science. It's good community engagement, but the real benefit for the town of Oak Island is we'll be able to move forward with a sense of confidence that we can prevent coastal erosion along the ICW.
And you'll have a very realistic estimate of how these structures might perform, right? So, and in the ICW, I think the majority of the impact that you see is from boat wakes. Again, lots of folks are coming to the coast. They love this water. We all do. So we want to make sure that it's there for the next generation.
Are we asking questions now if we have a question about the MOU or are they hanging around until the end?
No, go ahead and ask about the MOU now.
Does anyone else have a question about the presentation? All right, so I just had two questions about the MOU. So under the use of the funds, you use the word "support" a lot. So supporting students, that is pretty clear. You're going to be bringing students down here to do a lot of the research and work. Great idea. I know for our living shoreline, the mayor mentioned that my wife and I did one. NC State came down and worked like crazy on it. Loved everyone. But it also says "support activities related to things like the oyster projects or other areas that might need different tactics for a living shoreline." You mentioned soliciting the community and people can volunteer. So when you say "support activities," is there a requirement on our staff to engage in these activities or are you purely relying on your resources and volunteers on the community?
In case you haven't noticed, I love coming and speaking to a group. And so what we would be doing is encouraging our students. We're training them to come and interact with the community. So we would be bringing students. There's a lot of work that goes on before we put something in the water. And so they would be coming out. We would be discussing this with the community. Certainly, we would be discussing it with town leadership, getting some feedback there. But also, we want, again, it's very important that the citizens that want to get involved with something like this have that opportunity. And so we would be coming out to give presentations, education and environmental examples of other projects that we've done, as well as environmental education on just the fundamentals for how we expect things to work. So that's what those resources would cover.
Great. And hopefully, our community will respond and people will jump in, roll up their sleeves and grab some oyster shells.
So, and I will say that having done this in a number of other communities before, it's a bit contagious. You know, someone sees your community do it and they'll say, well, wait a minute, why aren't you coming up to our community and doing it? So we've worked in Pender County, Onslow County. We've worked up at Fort Casel. We've worked at a number of different projects of a variety of scales, so.
And I appreciate the enthusiasm. Just one quick comment. When my wife and I started our living shoreline project, we didn't receive well wishes and positive feedback. We had a lot of neighbors saying, why aren't you putting in a bulkhead? So it's, you know, we've got to change that mentality, right? So bulkheads aren't always the answer. We won't go into that debate, but let me ask my last question so we don't belabor this. So my last question goes right to what you were saying. You said a lot of work happens before you get started. I can tell you that a lot of work did happen before we got started and it was spelled C-A-M-A, KAMA. So I don't see anything in your MOU about engaging KAMA or when KAMA comes in. We have a KAMA resource in our town. I'm not going to automatically volunteer that resource. You'll have to talk to Catherine about that. But when or where or should we identify KAMA somewhere in this MOU just to make sure, you know, we cover our bases? Because I can tell you, KAMA had to come mark my 404 line and that was the reason why I called, is because my 404 line was slowly creeping up into my backyard. And we all know, if you live on the waterway, the closer that line gets, the less you can do any kind of improvements or build or whatever you want to do. And so our goal was to stabilize our 404 line and that's what led us to a living shoreline project. So help me understand, do we need to cover ourselves with KAMA in here or how does that fit in?
So, great question and it sort of covers my assumption. I assume that KAMA would be engaged early on. We have good relationships with the folks that are in those offices. We speak with them regularly. What we would want is for this to be the town's project. So we would want you guys to be involved in that KAMA permitting, but of course, we would provide all the background data and things of that nature, which is the way it has worked in most of those cases. If we're going to follow their general permit, there's one set of rules. If we have to do something different, there's a different set of rules. And so that would actually come about as we're discussing the approach for putting these things in.
Okay, so with that... Okay, so with, one, so with that, so Lydia, would you recommend that we include something in this MOU that commits our CAMA resource to participating at some level? It's not in here today, and that's my concern, is that if there's going to be requirements on our resources, I wanted, I'd like to see it somehow captured in, in the MOU that shows that we're, we're in on this too, right? Because if we sign this today, we don't have to commit anything, as far as a CAMA resource. But they're expecting some CAMA support. So, how do we address that?
There will need to be a permit for it, yeah.
From a staff perspective, we will absolutely continue to support the CAMA needs through this MOU. I don't know if legally, it has to have a sentence.
I don't think it has to have it, but when we get around to that, if I see something we should add, I can talk about it.
So, the other thing to consider, Mark, is that this is the umbrella of a memorandum of understanding, that, where we're doing a handshake, that we're going to work together. And then, out of the investigative work that Dr. Elfin and his staff and students will do, it will come a plan that will outline more in detail about what we're committing to do at, on the, along the ICW. And that will be more in the form, and you'll see that before they actually start work. So, there's, as you said, there's a lot of upfront. So, you can expect to see something where CAMA would be included along that line. But this is simply the umbrella that allows us to move forward in agreement. And there's another component of this that I'll mention, that we've talked about as part of the agreement, is UNCW is rich with all kinds of experts. And so, we're hoping that something that will grow out of this will be a speakers bureau. We have the ability not only to hear things live, but we have the ability to live broadcast, we have the ability to download on demand. And there have any number of topics across the campus that would be of regional interest or local interest to our residents and, and our neighbors, that we hope that that will have some legs as well. So, that's not a specific that's in there, but it's something that we've certainly talked about as part of this, as part of this program. But as we start developing those, we'll get closer to a plan, if you will, that will, that will bring back to council and for your consideration.
Mayor, if I may, just to respond to Councilman Martin, anyway, it does say, of course, in the MOU, the recipient agrees in carrying out activities, it shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws. So, I think that is a catch-all for CAMA, and as you say, it could be spelled out more later, too.
Does that help?
Yeah, that sounds great. And when you said the word "rich," I thought the next word out of your mouth was going to be "rich with funds," and you said "rich with resources." So, that was so close, we were so close.
They have access to grants that we don't even know about, so
That would be excellent.
This handshake is, is going to be good for everybody.
Thank you.
Terry, Bob?
Yeah, just, real quick, I just, two questions, if I could. So, great presentation, it was very clear, did a great job, we appreciate that. So, what other towns have you had this type of a partnership with? You mentioned Caswell.
So, we, we did a project with Fort Caswell, we put a living shoreline in there. Love for you guys to go see that, that's in their, their Marina Basin there. We've worked, of course, with the town of St. James, just across the waterway. We've been working with them for 20 years. For several years, we worked with Pender Watch out of Pender County. And so, that was a, that was a group with county leadership as, as a member of the group, but it was not a county-run group. So, Pender Watch was the, was the focus group. We worked with the North Carolina Coastal Federation on a number of, of projects up and down the coast. And then, in the early days, we worked with City of Jacksonville on their Sturgeon City project that focused on Wilson Bay. We're not involved in that right now, but they, of course, have taken what they learned in those early years, and now they're, they've implemented a oyster restoration program for the whole river. So, it's a, it's an absolutely phenomenal undertaking.
Right.
Yeah, and I'll just add, we're also working with Wrightsville Beach, we've done a lot of work with them over the years. And also, the Figure Eight Island has just approached us as well about some of their sand needs, which are similar to yours. So, we actually held a conference, a regional conference, because this sand affects all of you. And if we take it from here, it might affect someone here, right? So, we have to take more of a regional or statewide approach to those issues. So, that's one of the things that we're looking at as well. So, we'll continue to do that.
Terrific.
And that's the second, the very last thing on the agenda.
And lastly, if I could, so with respect to sharing information and updates as you work your way through the project, walk us through, what does that look like?
So, that actually is something we can talk about, what, how much information do you really want, right? So, normally, when we are working with communities, we'll have student engagement, they'll come out and they'll talk about their experiences. That could be with leadership, as well as with community groups. We will actually share the information as we collect it. I'm, I'm really hoping that folks here will actually want to get involved, you know, in a hands-on sort of way. But we'll provide reports, poster presentations, presentations similar to this, so that you'll have access to what's happening with the project as the project develops and grows.
Okay, fantastic. We have a great communication director that pushes out an awful lot of that types of information. So, when there is an opportunity for volunteers, he'll push that out, and hopefully, there'll be a long line of people.
You would be surprised, I, let me change that. Troy was surprised. When I first started working on Living Shorelines, a community called and said, hey, we have some interest. I thought five or six people were going to show up, you know. Ninety-four people showed up at my first event, and I was, I was absolutely shocked. So, if the community gets behind this project and wants to get involved, it, it really takes on a life of its own, and it's, it's really an incredible thing to be a part of.
The speakers bureau at the town of St. James I was at, 250 people showed up.
192 on the ground yesterday at St. James, putting new oyster bags in, along their shoreline.
And, and so, let me just go ahead and say, when we talk about the speakers bureau and stuff like that, we would be looking for you to tell us what the community wants to hear, right? Troy's interested in all kinds of stuff. I might not trans, those topics might not translate to the community, but if you guys can tell us what the community really wants to hear, we have such a depth of knowledge at UNCW, it's absolutely incredible. From economics to engineering, you know, you name the topic.
So, this might be a good project with, for council to consider engaging EAC in some of this work as a point of the spear, so to speak, to engage the community. It falls right under their body of work, their portfolio. That's the Environmental Advisory Committee.
I picked up. I will share that, that here at the coast, sea turtles are really a very important species that people are interested in. Troy doesn't know a lot about them, but we actually have colleagues that are in-depth knowledge of, of sea turtles. And so, you know, that's one that comes up, especially during the summer months, people are very interested in that. And it may be that we're more interested in general weather and storm patterns as we move into hurricane season, things, people begin to get focused on different topics.
Any other questions for our UNCW neighbors?
I'd like to say, thank you first for coming and making your presentation. You folks will be back in Wilmington already, before we get to the back of our agenda book to, to address this. So, I want to, I want to say in front of you all, my take is, we get excellent expertise, excellent education, excellent mentoring. Our town manager and our mayor will be hands-on for $30,000 a year. So, I say thank you for allowing us to be a part of this. Our shoreline needs help.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Safe travels home, and we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a presentation from our commercial code repair staff.
Yes, thank you. While Hallie is coming up, I just want to take a minute to set the stage for this very important work. The Economic Development Strategic Plan is also on your agenda tonight. But first, we wanted to begin to lay the foundation for this economic development work, to ensure our success in creating the type of town that we want. This work is planning for our future, to make us proactive participants in attracting and encouraging what we want to see in the future at Oak Island. This will help us be less reactionary to the plans that come before us. It'll help us to shape the future. This is our opportunity to ensure Oak Island's future aesthetic reality and financial reality. If we don't make changes to our rules, little change can happen. We'll continue to struggle to attract the type of businesses that we want, and we certainly don't want to lose the ones that we have. We want to be small business friendly to both our existing and our yet-to-come. Our residential-commercial ratio is one component of this. We have roughly 11% land use devoted to commercial at full build-out. We find ourselves at less than 3% commercial on the tax base for a financial ratio. We're almost all residential. We must increase and diversify our tax base, or who will be paying the tax burden increases in the future. We're also almost built out, approximately 88%, including both commercial and residential. It's even higher for the residential build-out. The remainder of our growth will be in redevelopment and in infill development. This is harder than blank slate development. We want to use carrots, not just sticks. We want to encourage, not just regulate. By decreasing and removing the barriers that we'll be talking about tonight, and allowing more options, we can help stimulate and encourage the business that we want. We'll encourage businesses not only to grow, but others to start. If we truly want complete streets, safe development, walkability, traditional neighborhood design, mixed-use, and transit-oriented development, we got to promote that through our regulations. The presentation tonight starts this conversation. It's based on the lean code tools and over 20 different elements that we've identified so far, to help economic development for Oak Island. These recommenda, recommendations that Hallie will go over are consistent with our comprehensive land use plan, our strategic plan, our streetscape plans, and with the Council of Government Assessments, item number three, four, and six. Just want to take a minute to thank Hallie and Matt in the back for all their work, starting this project. And we look forward to having an opportunity to dive into the details with you more at the next work session. Hallie?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for tying that up as well. Catherine? So, what is the Commercial Code Repair? It's an initiative that aims to make changes to the code of ordinances that affect commercial areas with three main objectives: to improve the usability, to increase the flexibility, and to make more projects financially feasible, especially given the physical reality of our commercial areas with smaller, shallow lot sizes that dominate our commercial core, especially here on the island, which was originally built as a highway corridor and not that walkable downtown. So, why update the commercial code? Today's code limits the flexibility, it makes most upgrades cost prohibitive, and leaves existing parcels too constrained to meet every rule at once. The result is a process that ends up favoring larger regional developers and not local business owners that we want to attract. Another point of this is that it's aligning with the streetscape project that we're doing in our comprehensive land use plan. A lot of the things that we talk about there, in there, these things need to be tweaked to help us accomplish those. So, how are we going to approach any potential changes? All the changes are grounded in things that council has been discussing. Every topic aligns with at least one thing in the town strategic plan, the draft comprehensive land use plan, and the streetscape master plan. All of those have been shaped through public input that everyone's been involved in over the last year-ish. And many of these specific issues have been brought up in our Business Advisory Board meeting, and they are also in full support of this initiative. Another point I want to make out, a point I want to make is that a lot of these items vary in complexity. Some are, some are kind of simple fixes, and some are larger lifts, while others are larger, maybe a simple fix, but a lot of staff time. So, they really vary in, in those kinds of things that we've been considering in this as well. So, why is this good for Oak Island? An improved code that small businesses can navigate better will help us strengthen the commercial share of our tax base, as Catherine touched on. It'll enable that incremental infill, or any underused parcels that we already have, and improve our year-round economic resilience. So, what happens if we don't change any of these things? If we leave the code unchanged, the storefronts can remain underutilized, growth, growth can shift to other towns, and eventually, homeowners will bear more of this, this tax burden. And we won't be able to meet all of the things we're trying to do in our comprehensive land use plan, strategic plan, the streetscape master plan. So, we've identified six topics for these changes. I'll go over the goal of each topic, why it's important, and connect it to a real example in Oak Island. So, number one is procedures. The goal is to make it easier and faster to navigate the development process. Why it matters is outdated or overly complicated rules can discourage investment, especially from small businesses or local entrepreneurs. The example here, a local developer bought a bid, building to renovate it and add a second story, but it ended up exceeding the value for that. It would have had to come into full compliance for all of those improvements. And so, they decided not to move forward with that, and only made small changes to what they were going to be able to do. The second one is urban form. So, the goal is to enable walkable, attractive, and functional commercial areas. The streetscapes, cross-section plan for Oak Island shows pedestrian paths, shared access, buildings that kind of frame the street, all of which are difficult to do under our current rules, especially for redevelopment. The example here is, a commercial property was planning a new build, but the setback rules were so restrictive that their plan didn't fit, that what they were planning to do didn't meet our rules. And it couldn't get in what they wanted to get a truck in, and able to turn around within their lot. And so, now the project has been on hold for many months, and kind of is up in the air. We don't know if it will happen, but because, because of our setback rules. Even though it's in a suitable use, and they own the property and would like to do it. So, the third point is parking. The goal here is to modernize parking requirements to reflect real demand and support better land use. Excessive or outdated parking standards can eat up valuable land, discourage redevelopment, and harm walkability. So, the old model is to kind of require as many parking spots as you need for your busiest time of year, when your everyday use, you may not need all, all of that lots. But, that really harms the walkability. A real example here is a restaurant wanted to add outdoor seating to their dining space, but that changes your ratio of how much parking you have to add. And they had already maxed out their parking, and so, they weren't able to expand into their outdoor dining. Site development. So, the goal is to provide flexibility while ensuring safe, functional, and attractive sites. sites. Site development standards often add cost or complexity without improving any outcomes. Many of our commercial sites have multiple driveways and curb cuts, making it easier for vehicles to pull in at any point, especially here off East Oak Island Drive. This creates a lot of safety issues and discourages walkability. The current code doesn't limit these access points or encourage any shared use between businesses or properties. Number five is signage. The goal is to really make the sign or needs easier to use and clarify it. Even a basic wall sign is in multiple places in our code and very confusing for business owners. This is probably the number-one issue I hear about from business owners, and every one of them has a sign and so is using it is another reason this is, every business is going to be using this, and it's very confusing and complex. This example is from a business that's in a multi-tenant building, so in the way our code is written, they have to share what they're allowed between the space, and they really feel like they had no options in the signage they're allowed to have, and they feel very restricted by that. The last one is use. So the goal is keep the permitted useless current clear and flexible. Our current table is really long, it's very specific, and it's difficult to navigate. It often delays straightforward business types or sends people to get special use permits unnecessarily. There, the example is a business that wants to assemble a product in a commercial building in Oak Island. It's really, there's no retail component, no customer traffic, but the current code didn't allow that specific use, and so he has already rented the space but is not legally allowed to operate his business, even though it's a perfectly suitable space for his business. So these are the six topics that we're going to look into. The code is a well-intended document to recap, but it has become complex over time and really difficult to navigate, especially for small business that we want to attract. It slows projects down and increased costs and creates more hoops that are more likely for bigger developers. They're the ones that have the resources to jump through those hoops, and who gets left out are the smaller businesses. Tackling the issues outlined tonight will keep our design, quality, safety, and standards intact while making the rules clear, more flexible, and more affordable. And each change also supports, again, all of the things, the economic development goals that we're setting out in these townwide plans: our comprehensive land use plan, our streetscape plan, and our strategic plan as well. So thank you, and we'll be able to dig into this more on Thursday. We'll have questions.
Thank you, Hallie. Any questions of Council for Hallie tonight, knowing that we're going to dig in?
Thursday, we meet with you and Matt.
Correct. That one. Good. Thank you very much. Looking forward to the work.[843.00][843.00](APPLAUSE). Counsel, do you have any adjustments of the agenda?
May I note two things, Mayor?
Please.
Okay. On the April 29th minutes, I just need to remove our town attorney as being present at that meeting, as she was not since it was a budget workshop. And then on the consent agenda, number 1.5, it should also reference amendments to the fee schedule in the agenda listing. And that's included in the memo and the motion, so just wasn't on the listing.
Any other modifications, Counsel?
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to request that the minutes, Town Council minutes of 5:13:25 be removed from the consent agenda for discussion.
Any other modifications? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
All in favor? It's fine. Thank you. Next is public comment, which I'm sure is what many of you have come to express your thoughts and your concerns. We have a full house tonight, and I appreciate everyone coming. I ask you to stay within the rules. So we allot three minutes. I ask you to watch your time. That's your responsibility. We have a clock, and I usually give someone a few seconds to finish their thought before turning off the mic, so just be aware of that. And if you have written comments that you would like to submit to the Clerk, perhaps you don't get through all of them or don't intend to get through all of them, but want your, the full write-out or script of what you've noted for tonight, Lisa Stites will be happy to accept those from you. So I ask everyone, please, to be polite, to be professional, to stay on the high side of your comments, and address all of Council, not anyone specifically. So this is a business meeting, I'll remind you, and I wouldn't hate to gavel anyone because of a point of order. So please, just if you'll monitor yourselves, I would be very appreciative. Lisa?
Yeah.
We have Mariah Cook.
Greetings, Madam Mayor, Councilmember, fellow residents. My name is Mariah. My last name is changing to Cook in just a couple of days, so that is how I am choosing to address you tonight. I currently live at 113 Southeast 15th Street, and I'm here tonight as a resident that cares very deeply about the future of Oak Island. At last month's meeting, I was troubled by the way an individual spoke to and about our mayor. To me, it felt dismissive, disrespectful, and frankly beneath the dignity of this Council. Suggesting that our mayor should serve primarily as a figurehead, cutting ribbons, kissing babies, completely ignores the education, the experience, and the leadership she brings to this town. I'm not sure what caused that kind of attitude or the social media attacks that followed. I'd like to believe it was just a really bad day, or maybe the heat got to that individual. But regardless of the reason, our community deserves professionalism and respect from everyone sitting at your table. Oak Island faces real challenges and opportunities. We need leaders who collaborate, who respect each other's contributions, and who put the town ahead of politics or personal frustrations. I support our mayor because she shows up, she does the work diligently, she listens, and she leads with integrity. I hope that moving forward, this Council will engage in constructive debate, even when your opinions differ. That's healthy democracy. But public disrespect, that's not. We deserve better, and I believe Oak Island can do better together. And Madam Mayor, you have my deepest respect. Thank you.[1127.74][1127.74](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Council. Scott Stevenson, 103 Northwest First Street. Last month was a learning experience. We saw the bulk of time during the last meeting spent discussing building heights that have been discussed to death, gravel, and real estate signs. Yet another special use permit where we heard the words we should never hear from our government. Our hands are tied. How many times have we heard those words over the last two years? That's not what we voted for. You've seen approval for mixed-use of commercially zoned parcels that will likely never see commercial development twice this year. Why? Because your hands are tied. Were any requirements for workforce housing discussed? The question was asked, answered, and dropped. In most towns, this would be a focus of conversation, but not here. The developers got their wish, and important commercial property may never be developed for commercial use. But the more important question for you is, did the citizens of Oak Island get what they want and deserve? Those developers did not elect you to office and are not the constituency that should concern you. Current businesses are struggling to find manpower, and the ability to attract an employer of any size is hampered by the fact that the only available employee work pool consists of people collecting Social Security. How long do we think those collecting Social Security can be a major source of local revenue? Or is the plan to allow gentrification to simply eliminate those older residents from the equation completely? Instead, let's spend time talking about where real estate signs should be allowed and how people may or may not have pulled permits for gravel along the right-of-way 20 years ago, because those are obviously the priority. The current enforcement model regarding the gravel is probably going to be expensive for the town if the wrong person gets a nonconformity letter and the town cannot prove the nonconformity. Remember, innocent until proven guilty. It is increasingly clear that the priorities being debated do not align with the pressing needs of our community. While small procedural matters occupy the agenda, the broader issues that impact residents daily remain sidelined. Too often, the focus drifts to minutia, as if by addressing the peripheral, the core challenges will somehow resolve themselves. This disconnect only fuels frustration in a sense that leadership is out of step with those they were elected to represent. I truly have respect for all of you, but unless the important priorities of infrastructure, public safety, expanding the tax base, and incentivizing businesses becomes the focus, and you find a way to untie your hands and be the advocates for residents of Oak Island we elected you to be, the question has to be asked, do you understand the true needs of Oak Island? Thank you for your time.[1328.14][1328.14](APPLAUSE).
If I can ask you to hold your applause so we can move through this a little more quickly, I'd appreciate it. Thank you for your enthusiasm, though. David Merkel?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the Council. My name is David Merkel, residing at 236 Northeast 34th Street. I have a prepared statement, but I'm going to vary from it quite a bit because the first speaker here really covered most of the points that I wanted to make. But I was quite disturbed, as was my wife, when we viewed the proceedings of the June 10th Council meeting, and there were comments that were very critical of our mayor and her leadership role in our town government, and I think these comments were also delivered in insulting and belittling manner, comments such as that she should stay in her own lane because she was not a voting member of Town Council but merely a providing official over town, that the mayor's role was beyond the mayor's role, there were just merely ceremonial types of duties, signing contracts and kissing babies, and the inference that the role that she played was really quite minimal, without much meaning or importance. And I'll just make a couple of comments here that, one of the comments was, well, she's not a voting member, so she's not that important. Well, in fact, she is a voting member when there's a tie in the vote by this Council, and I submit to you that a tie vote could be one of the most meaningful votes that a public servant could render. She also fulfills a lot of roles. It was stated that the, I want to go to the duties that are listed for our council manager type of form of government, that she was exceeding what she should have, as if this language was limiting her or a councilperson from doing the minimum standards we're set forth to do. And this mayor does, and I'm sure I don't know half or even a small part of what all of she does, but I do know that she's a very activist mayor, and she consults and attends meetings and works on public relations and tries to be a booster for our town, working with a lot of different types of organizations, be they fellow towns either nearby or whether she's working with local government agencies, county government agencies, state agencies, and even federal agencies with the Intercop.
Your time, Mr. Merkel. Please submit your, if you want your notes. Lisa will take them. Barbara Merkel?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Councilmembers. I am Barbara Merkel. I have resided at 236 Northeast 34th Street for a little over 40 years. I am the original owner-operator of The Beverage Barn, a business of many years and was a member of the Southport Oak Island Chamber of Commerce. I have experienced many mayors during these years, some good and some not so good. I do not claim to know everything about the town government, but what I do know is that we have a great mayor right now, and if you demote Mayor Liz White to the lowly position of only doing minimal tasks like kissing babies and presiding over meetings without much power, you are making a huge mistake. Ms. Liz is very talented for her position as mayor and is for the people who live here. In 1999, when the two towns merged, my design was chosen for your town's seal. Every time I see my artwork on the town vehicles, billing statements, and on the town entry hallway floor, I have a feeling of gratification and pride. Along with my late husband, Jim Hanksen, we were the ones who created the first Christmas by the Sea parade. I am proud of my present husband, David Merkel, who has become involved with many town activities, including membership in the EAC and coordinating the Smart Yard program. I do think the street end usage needs to be addressed and after making ruling, needs to be enforced. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kamala Johnson?
Good evening, Councilmembers and Honorable Mayor. I just want to comment that last-
Could you tell us where you live, Pam?
Oh, I'm sorry. 101 Northeast 28th Street. Last meeting left me feeling very disheartened. It left me feeling angry. It left me feeling like our council has descended to the level of children because of the behavior that was exhibited. I was looking for a specific children's book that I have, and unfortunately, it is in Elm City. I have a house there, so I chose I'd use the adult version. I think we're all adults here, and it's from the greatest book ever written. It has sold the most copies in the world, the Holy Bible, and you can find it in Mark 3:22 through 35. But I'm not going to read all of that. I'm going to tell you that the story is Jesus told a parable, and the Sanhedrin didn't like it, and the people didn't like it. And this is what he said: "And if a house is divided against itself, that house will not be able to stand." "And if a house is divided against itself, that house will not be able to stand." And it appears that this council has a division, and you will fail, just like the house built on the sand. You've come so far, and I voted for each one of you on this council because I believed that you could unite and put this town first, get your politics out of the way, and work for the town. One of the greatest presidents, Abraham Lincoln, had a speech that he gave on June 16th, 1855, in which he said that the nation divided could not stand. And then he had a colleague, Leonard Swift, and I'm going to paraphrase what Leonard Smith said. "I do not expect Oak Island to cease to exist. I will not, it will not cease until a crisis shall present itself, have been reached, and crossed over. We can cross over, yes. So, council, please get it together. Please give us what we voted for. Be a team. One person cannot do this job. May they come to you."
Thank you. Cheryl Gardner?
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members. My name is Cheryl Gardner. I live at 101 Northeast 28th Street, Oak Island. First, let me start by saying I sincerely appreciate the job that everyone on this council has done, as far as trying to keep our taxes down and, and everything that you have involved yourselves in. It is much appreciated, and even from the largest jobs which you guys do to the smallest people that work down in, as clerks and such, I just admire everyone who works for this town. And we are, we do appreciate it, as the citizens, we appreciate it. But I watched the last town council meeting. I was saddened and disappointed at the response to having the mayor be ostracized when it comes to defining the role of the mayor according to the charter. If we don't have unity and we can't accept help from one another as a town, we are doomed. I could understand if our mayor was not qualified to help, but I know for a fact that she is and that she should be utilized to help, and help is needed. Liz has worked as a public servant most of her life. She has taken responsibility on herself to take courses and learn what her role is as mayor and what it entails, and she collaborates with other mayors and people who have experience working for all kinds of townships to not only enhance the sustainability of our town, but to have vision in facing problems and solutions, which she utilizes in bringing to the council. I've read the charter, and I know what the role of the mayor is, as does she. She has done nothing more or less than any other mayor who is truly qualified for the job. I don't understand why anybody would refuse help when it comes to taking on especially large tasks that would really take a lot of time and resource for more than actually two people, and as was pointed out in the last meeting, is actually setting you up for failure. I don't want to see this council fail. Okay, we've become so self-absorbed that we overlook common sense. Can we not focus on helping each other for the betterment of the town instead of squabbling about kissing babies and just being a figurehead? That's not what I voted for, and when I voted for each of you, I voted for unity. The citizens of this town deserve a council, mayor, and town employees who work united and not be petty when it comes to getting things done. It's unacceptable behavior to do, and it's, it's just not utilizing all of our assets by not having a mayor who can help and is willing to help. So we're either for each other, or we're against each other, and there's no in-between. And I just appreciate your time. I just want to say, united we stand, divided we fall. I don't want to fall, and I want the council to be united in helping each other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bob Green?
My name is Bob Green. I reside at 130 Southeast 40th Street, Oak Island. Excuse me. Councilman Curio sent an email. I read it, and it said, "Town council meeting, June 10th. Concerns and respects, respect and leadership. A town council member publicly stated that Mayor White needs to stay in her lane. He has also repeatedly referred to Mayor White's sole role as simply ceremonial, saying it consists mainly of kissing babies and cutting ribbons. These remarks have been unsettling to many and raise questions about respect, personality personally for Mayor White, the officer mayor, and for our town's leadership structure. Like many residents, I am offended by these disrespectful comments, and I also struggle with understanding just what the end game here for the council, for the council member." He further states, stated, "I am just taking care of my friends," when he proposed approving real estate signage in the public right-of-way. This is disconcerting to many residents who have called me to share their concerns. Now my comments. I respect your dedication to our town, but I am very concerned about the unfounded misleading accusations you made about a fellow council member. I listened to that council meeting twice. I didn't hear those things. I heard disagreement about, I didn't even hear disagreement. The question was, what is the role and function of the mayor? She is a non-voting member. Now, if you want to change that, then change it, but do it legally. I have a great deal of respect for Mayor White. I think you're doing a great job, okay? He did not state what you accused him of saying. Why did you do this? Now, I have a great deal of respect for Councilman Curio. I just don't, it's a game, ladies and gentlemen. It is a dangerous game, okay? Just what is your end game? Elected officials can disagree without going down the road of misdirection or misinformation. Your email is a personal attack against Councilman Kraft. It is not honorable. Now, I'm going to tell you this. A very wise man once told me, my father, wisdom skipped a generation when it came to me, but it came down to this. He said, "There are those who preach the word; there are those who teach the word; and there are those who live the word. Bobby, follow those who live the word." Councilman Kraft lives the word. I've never heard him say anything disparaging about any other member of this council. He's, as he says, "People dis-" That's what it's about. Now, I think Mayor White is phenomenal there. I think you're all doing a great job, but it bothers me when I get an email saying, it becomes a complaint. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Monica Williams?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Monica Williams and live at 2204 West Oak Island Drive. I'm here to address the board about the right-of-way gravel issue. We received a letter yesterday with two pages of legal jargon that no citizen without a legal background could possibly understand. I am aware that there is still discussion about this issue, and I just wanted to put our two cents in for what that's worth. My first concern is applying for the permit. Are we applying for a permit just to be told that it has to be removed? Are many people on this island applying for a $100 permit to just be told that it has to be removed? That seems like quite the money windfall for the town. If the town knows that it's not going to be approved, then that just is what needs to be said. We've lived in our house for over five years. My husband was in the yard one day and literally had an Oak Island person, staff member, stop and talk to us about our gravel. We were told that we needed to remove the edging at the end of our gravel, but that we had the correct gravel that the town required and that everything else was great. We did that immediately and never heard another word. Now, over five years later, we're being told that we got to dig it all up? Will the driveways be next? Will you go back and have everyone dig up their non-pervious driveway? Where does this stop? Second, we believe that there needs to be clear and concise direction on the requirements of the row. You can tell by the conversations in the community that everyone has a different opinion of where the right-of-way actually goes to and how many feet from the center line it is. Everyone also has a different opinion of what can and cannot be in the right-of-way. So obviously, the letter was sent out does not make that clear. We personally were sent a picture of almost our whole front yard and no clear explanation to what is a violation, and since we were told everything was fine five years ago, we simply do not know. Please think about the consequences for the homeowners on this island. Think about the money that it'll take for homeowners to undo what we were told was okay to do. I completely understand that there are things that should not be put in the right-of-way that could cause danger, but gravel, that is the approved town gravel, is not one of those things. Please consider that the tree ordinance, stormwater, and non-pervious driveways were grandfathered in, and consider this same action for this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynda Barnes, 4328 East Dolphin. I have some practical matters I wanted to talk about. I've been coming here for over 65 years. Long Beach is not what it used to be. I am very happy to see all the improvements for the handicapped access at the 46th Street access. It's improved tremendously, but I do have two issues still. The observation deck still does not have a ramp that people can get up to it. It still requires stairs, and I do feel that the bathroom could be vastly improved. It's gotten a little better, but it's still not good. Also, on the bathroom side, we need more bathrooms in all the access areas. It just, we haven't, don't have very many right now. I'm hoping that the speed limits on Dolphin and Pelican can be looked at. They are very busy with foot traffic, bike traffic, scooter traffic, kids, and I do feel 35 is too fast. I do, and I noticed that the side roads are 25. I really feel that Dolphin and Pelican need to be reduced. I'd like to see beach reduced down to 25, but I understand that's a state road and much, much more complicated. The issue I had with the limited number of crosswalks has been explained to me that that will be improving fairly soon. But I do have a question, sort of. I can't answer right now, but I found a woman parking on the right-of-way near my house in front of an empty lot, and I said to her, "If you park there, you'll get a ticket." And she said, "But there's no sign. How was I supposed to know that I couldn't park there?" And I don't, I personally don't know that, how that is explained to our tourists, that you don't park on the right-of-way or you'll get a ticket. That might be it. All right, I think I've covered all my questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Turner?
I'm Mark Turner, 105 West Island Drive. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for letting us speak. I will say that I sent you an email regarding voting on Oak Island. I hope you read that. Take me up on that at some time if you can. Tonight, I'm here to speak on, I received a letter on Friday regarding my driveway. Shocked, would be the right word. I came Monday morning to find out what could be done, what I have done wrong. I brought a picture of me standing in that same driveway at five years old. I'm 55, so that's a 50-year-old driveway that has not changed. The gravel, the width, it has not changed one foot. So I'm completely concerned about how you could say I'm out of violation for a driveway that's been there for 50 years and have stood. I look at it this way. The analogy would be to me, if you've changed an ordinance and you haven't set a date of precedence on that, so you could tonight vote to lower the heights of the houses to a one-story house, then send staff out to make everybody on the island cut down their second and third story. That's what you've done to me in that same process. So I tell you to go back and look. I think it's North Carolina Statute 160D 111 that says you cannot overstep your boundaries as a city-town, and you have to retro and allow us, that have been there for a long period of time, to stay with what we have. Thank you for your time. I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. Joyce Martin?
Madam Mayor and Town Council, I am Joyce Martin, and I live at 129 Northwest 15th Street. I've been a full-time resident for seven years, and I've been disabled for four years. I've been trying for three and a half years to get ADA-compliant beach accesses on Oak Island. Some progress has been made. Two ADA-compliant accesses have been added on the east end of the island at 46th and Kaziah Streets. The west end has none. The west end of Oak Island desperately needs at least one ADA access. I have found that 57th West is a great access, and it would not take much effort to make it ADA-compliant. In the summer of 2022, 57th West had a wonderful Moby mat that continued over the soft sand on the beach side, making it much easier to roll my wheelchair onto the beach. For some reason, that mat now stops at the top of the hill, and the additional mat is no longer there. Please, can that mat be replaced? On June 12th, 2025, I was told that to add a third ADA project was not permitted and had not been provided for in the budget, and that my request would be put on the long list of requests for the town. I've been coming before you for three and a half years trying to get ADA beach accesses on the west end. Why was it not already on the list of requests? Can you understand why I'm so frustrated? I understand the town has an outside firm coming to do a town-wide assessment that will include ADA regulation recommendations. Please be sure that the beach accesses are included in this assessment. I Googled, "Do NC beaches have to comply with ADA regulations?" Yes, ADA compliance is generally mandatory for public beaches in North Carolina. It goes on to say, "Even without specific ADA standards for beaches and the 2010 ADA standards, the general requirements for nondiscrimination and programming- and the 2010 ADA standards, the general requirements for nondiscrimination and program accessibility apply." Please add ADA beach accesses to the west end of Oak Island. Thank you.
Don Drawan? Don, okay, thank you.
My name is Don Drawan. I live at 6640 Kingsland Drive. I've been a resident for seven and a half years. I'm a great fan of your Friday night concerts. I go every Friday night that I'm in town. We were thrilled to go Tuesday night to the Chamber of the Board. We got there, it was twelve of us, we had three, two of my adult children and I. We all had a car full, and we drove there an hour early. And, you know, there, as you know, there's no parking. I mean, when you have hundreds of people like that, there's no parking available. The, and everything that's supposed to be parked in is parked in by that point in time. So I ended up, and my daughter ended up parking on East Pelican, and another one, son parked on Forty-Ninth Street. There's no sign that says you can't have two, two wheels in the road on any of those streets. And so, you know, you can imagine after the end of the concert, I've been going to concerts for seven years. I haven't ever been given a ticket. But after the fireworks, we all go back to our cars, and we all have fifty-dollar tickets, you know, for the, you know, that were issued around seven twenty-four or something like that. And it's not so much the money. I started thinking about it. I kept telling all my kids, give me the tickets, I'm gonna appeal it. I've appealed, I've already heard back from the police that, that, you know, it's because I had two wheels in the, in the. But if you've tried to park on those streets, you know that a lot of them have ditches. If you, you're either gonna be in the ditch, or you're gonna have two wheels in the, in the street. Also, most of us in North, and, you know, I grew up in Durham, we have a house in Durham. You know, most neighborhoods, you, you have, if you're parking on the street, you have all four wheels on the road, you know? And so you're not accustomed that a road has to have all four wheels off the road in somebody's yard or on the, on the, I guess, the roadway. So anyway, long and short of it, I just thought we ought to think about this from a standpoint of visitors who don't, you know? Maybe we should issue a warning so people can learn that that is a rule. Maybe we can post something, you know, that says if you have to have all wheels off the road. Or three, maybe we can use the police officer who are actively out there giving us tickets. Why don't they help do the parking so that we can figure out, how do we get a thousand people parked here without violating the laws? Those are my suggestions, you know? Hopefully, we could come to a better solution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jane Myers?
My name is Jane Myers. My husband and I own a house at 108 Northeast Fifty-Second Street. It's our vacation home for us, but our daughter lives there full-time and teaches at the Brunswick Community College. I'm here to speak on the right-of-way, the gravel in the right-of-ways. We bought our house in two thousand, let's see, it would have been two thousand and eleven. The home was built in two thousand. I do have pictures of two thousand and four, and the gravel was there just as we have it there today. So we know, we, we know the gravel, the area is, was approved for that at the time. I don't know about two thousand, two thousand and four. And I'm not, this is not a new topic for me. It's not, not my first rodeo. In nineteen, in twenty twenty-three, I received the letter that I'm sure many people are receiving the last couple of days. And this was June, let's see, July eighteenth of twenty twenty-three. I live in Albemarle, so as soon as I got the letter, I drove here to, to talk with the person at that time, Dave Emerson. I met with him, and he explained to me that we had to dig up the gravel, not only the gravel that was there, but we had to go back even further into our yard because, he said, you can't, we need you to be on the other side of your water meter. I challenged that, I wrote letters to, emails to all of the town council members at that time, and to the mayor. And I did get responses back from several of those, very kind messages that you would take a look at it. It disturbs me that this subject's coming up now. If you've been knowing it's been going on, a question, a concern back to twenty twenty-three, why hasn't more been done between the past two years? And I want to tell you the results of ours. I was very pleased at the time because I got a letter, an email from Dave Emerson, carbon copied to Matt Kirkland and David Kelly. And what he had to say was, "Miss Jane, we have reviewed the details of your case with our planning director, and based on our aerial photos of your property, we have determined the gravel was pre-existing. However, any expansion of the area will require you to be compliant with our ordinances." So I responded back and of course thanked him for his response. And I said, "I want to make sure that I understand. Am I correct that we are in compliance as it is now with the understanding that we cannot make the gravel right-of-way area any larger?" The response I got back was, "You are correct, as long as you don't make it any larger." So I, I'm sorry, but the gravel is one of the best things that can be there. It's, it's pervious. If we can pay and get our gra, our driveway, which is, and double the size of it, because I think it's at twenty-four feet.
Thank you. Helen Hunt?
Good evening. I'm Helen Hunt. I live at 167 Northwest Fifth Street. As of the June meeting, the town has decided that non-structural improvements, permeable ground coverings in the residential right-of-way is a devastating ordinance violation as it harms, hmm, what does it harm? Ordinance 261D, as in DOG, clearly states that property owners shall be permitted to undertake seeding of lawn or other non-structural improvements and are obligated to properly maintain the same. It appears that prior town government had the foresight to put this section in the ordinance to allow residents to enhance their streetscape. Additionally, the town here is required to maintain and mow the right-of-way. So this would cut expenses in the town. And doesn't gravel or landscape stone and other such permeable ground covering look better than overgrown weeds and stickers? Note, it was not until January tenth, twenty twenty-three, that Ordinance 261A was amended to include the words "on-street parking construction" as an encroachment requiring town approval, meaning a permit. Prior to twenty twenty-three, this amendment, I could find nothing in the ordinances that stated a permit was required for non-structural improvements. I am not a lawyer, but it seems to me that any permeable ground coverage, gravel, stones, and such placed before January tenth, twenty twenty-three, required no permit and was and still is in compliance with this ordinance. Does the town not have more important things to do than waste time and resources over something as significant as gravel and landscape stones in the right-of-way? The town prefers sea, it's sand, weed, and stickers? I can't even wrap my head around this. It's the most ridiculous thing I have ever heard come out of our town government. And I am very surprised that this motion passed with four votes, except for Counselor Chulo, who said it exactly, making major something minor.
Thank you. George Williams?
I'm George Williams. I live at 133 Northwest Eighteenth Street. I guess I'm like several of the other residents here today. I got an envelope yesterday as well about his driveway. I've been here, well, I bought my home here in two thousand and sixteen, and that driveway's been there ever since I bought this home. So I didn't know if these things were grandfathered in or, or what the deal is. But that was the issue I have, is it looks like if y'all are gonna pass some sort of new ordinance or whatnot, you would have something set aside for those that already, you know, had this, these permeable driveways or, you know, gravel driveways, whatever they got. And another thing I'd like to say too as well, I've been coming here for forty-something years. You know, bigger's not always better. If I wanted to live in Myrtle Beach, I would have moved to Myrtle Beach when I retired. There's a reason I moved here, because I like the atmosphere that's been here since I was coming here, since I was twenty years old, and I decided to retire here. So I just wanted to say, you know, this is a family town to me, or, or it seemed to be, but it seems like it's turning into more of a HOA now. And I don't, you know, I don't, I don't need to have my, my bureaucracy in how I do my lawn. I'm a good steward of my yard. I, I try to keep it nice and cut and green. I've had it sodded. It's a beautiful yard to me and all my neighbors. But all of a sudden, the town has a problem with it. So anyway, I'd just like y'all to consider these issues, these other people have addressed as well.
Thank you. Rick Morrison? What was that name? Rick Morrison?
Good evening. I'm Rick Morrison, 146 Northeast Third Street. I wanted to speak a little bit on the row. Last time I was up here, I spoke on the row. I don't have a violation. However, if you look down my street, one of my neighbors does. So there is a lot of beautification of things in the row that look good, that are whatever. And all of a sudden, guys have decided, we don't want to do that anymore. So my question is, I'd love for this council to answer, to what end are you doing this exercise? Why are you telling this person back here, fifty years is, oh, you need to fix your driveway, this other person? It's not wide enough. So again, the bottom line is, we need to know this answer. What is the end goal of the council to cause us to have to re-dig up our gravel, dig up our, our stuff in your property, which is the front twenty feet of my yard, and you're not maintaining very well at all? Which is the only thing I have weeds and things growing on. And the only thing that you've done is you've made us all aware that we don't own that twenty feet of our yard. You do. I went and looked at my survey, and sure enough, I don't own the front twenty feet. I don't pay taxes on it, but I have to mow it. So I would like to see the town council put in the next budget, the maintenance man, the mowers, and everything else to start maintaining your property since you're causing us all of this grief in what's been done in the last seventy years on Oak Island. That's, that's the bottom line. What are you gonna do about it? Thanks.
Thank you. Matt Ham, Hammond, sorry. What was that, Lisa? Matt Hammond? Ann Shading?
I'm passionate in this room, huh? I'm Ann Shading, 2502 West Jot. Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the Oak Island community. I'm here to speak about another topic from the June tenth meeting. It has been mentioned. At that nearly four-hour meeting, a councilman put themselves on record as working on behalf of friends and perhaps their employer. No conflict of interest was mentioned or disclosed, and the town was basically asked to engage in quid pro quo. This is unacceptable. It was requested to allow Realtors for-sale signs in the right-of-way, the same right-of-way where our town recently spent time and money to beautify by planting new live oak trees, and the same right-of-way where we're now having to move our gravel. Do we need to have signs littering the town's right-of-way? It feels like our town has enough to worry about. We're all trying to keep up with the growth, the tourists, the sand, and keeping our tax rates down. Where does moving signs into the right-of-way fit into our strategic plan? It doesn't. After using maybe twenty minutes of a town council meeting, this proposal has now been passed to the planning committee. So to the planning committee, I really hope this doesn't take up too much of your time. What benefit would it be to the community to allow those signs in the right-of-way? Do the citizens of Oak Island want for-sale signs and other vile and offensive signs all along our streets? Consider the extra effort and money it might cost us for code enforcement to, to police this, for the mowers to work around all of the signs, and the town staff when emptying the town's trash bins. Is this something the town should be spending time and money on? Is this in the best interest of the people of Oak Island? I don't think so. Please, let's focus on the Oak Island strategic plan. There's so much to be done. If this does come back to our town council, I hope that one of you will call out the conflict of interest. Thank you, and thank you all for all the time and effort you put into this town.
Thank you. That's it?
Thank you, everyone. There was quite a diversity of, of issues. Thank you for being engaged in your community. This is what democracy is all about. Y'all are pivotal to how Oak Island moves forward. And I appreciate your taking the time to, to talk to our council tonight. Thank you very much. Moving on to council reports. Mark, would you like to start?
Sure, I'll try to be brief. First, last month, the Cape Fear RPO board, we met, and we're ramping up, getting ready for, our favorite activity is prioritizing NC DOT projects. So last month, we focused on making sure everyone was compliant, everyone has received their training. So we are ready to go, that exciting task of trying to prioritize DOT projects. Speaking of DOT projects, it may not look like it, but the two-eleven expansion is progressing actually pretty well. And so we're, we're happy with that. I've also learned that our update to our bicycle plan here on Oak Island is also progressing very well. So hopefully, we'll get some good news out of that soon. Yep, yep, Catherine's saying yes. So we'll be getting some updates from that very soon as well. I'll say it now, I'm sure everybody else is gonna say it. Beach Day, July first, Tuesday, it was a blast. It always is a blast. So I want to take the extra effort this year to make sure that I cascade gratitude and thanks to everyone who had a hand in it. I know our department heads and our town manager are very well organized, putting my appreciation, because it really does probably take every single employee from the town. Doesn't matter if you worked on it a month ahead, getting things ready, or you were there the day of, putting your hands on events and activities and people. Just thank you from the bottom of my heart to everyone. It just amazes me, year over year, how we continue to pull this thing off, almost without hitch. I'm sure there were probably some little hiccups along the way. Thank goodness, I don't hear about them, so that means we did a pretty darn good job of pulling this off. I even had people from out of town, I heard them on the beach talking about the fireworks display, and fireworks display, always amazing, but I really wanted to secretly say, you should've been here last year for our 25th anniversary, because we really went all out on the fireworks. But no, again, this year, good job with the fireworks. Even though it was windy, I even had Frankie, he's not here tonight, from the Police Department, he stopped by and spoke to me on the beach. He was like, Councilman Martin. I'm like, yeah Frankie. He goes, you're in the wrong place. I'm like, where should I be? He goes, go two blocks inland, because by the time we shoot the fireworks off, the wind's gonna blow it all the way over there, over the houses. You're not gonna see it on the beach. So of course, he was joking, but it was a great conversation, great times on the beach front. I also want to remind us again, prayers for Texas and the flooding. I know that was opened in invocation, and so the gentleman, I think he left, who complained about our invocation, I think this must've been his first town council meeting, we've been saying prayer, opening meetings for many, many, many years. And that's the one thing that I truly love about this community. At the fundamental level, we are a faith-based community, whatever your faith is, and as a chaplain, I'm trained to acknowledge and cultivate whatever your faith is. So I love meeting people in the community, learning about all the, the faith-based people that we have. It brings us together in times of emergencies, in times of celebration. So thank you, thank you, thank you for that. And I also was gonna remind him, if he ever calls the Brunswick County Sheriff's Office, and they show up at his house, on the patrol car it says, "In God We Trust," so I don't know how that's gonna be handled, but even our local law enforcement are a faith-based community, and I love serving with them. Last but not least, just my little quick comment about last month is, I agree with the gentleman, I think he's still here. I don't believe Councilman Kraft acted out of line. I don't think he used any derogatory phrases or messaging. They're common words that are used in the business community every day. They're common words that are used in the political space every day. If you think what we did last month was horrendous, you're not watching the news and paying attention to the Democrats and the Republicans in, at the federal level, bickering and fighting and name-calling, right? There's been far other incidents of snickering and inappropriate words on this council that get picked up on microphones. No one comes to the podium and complains about that, but yet, all of a sudden now, people are coming to the podium and complaining about one meeting, right? Yes, we have opposing views. Is that not what you want? Don't you want different points of views coming to the table and bringing different ideas and debating those out? And if your feelings get hurt because you lost a vote, you've gotta come back next month with your head on and ready to work on the next issue, right? Sure, there's been some three-to-two votes, but that doesn't mean that's not a majority or we're not representing you. A three-two vote is still representing you, right? So if anyone thinks a three-two vote in the last eighteen months hurt you in any way, please email me and tell me specifically how that three-two vote hurt you, and I'd be happy to call you and talk to you. And oh, by the way, when you email me, please include your phone number, because I'll get emails and people will say, I want to talk to you, and there's no phone number. I have no idea how to get in contact with you without a phone number, so I email you back saying, I'd love to talk to you. What's your phone number? And I never hear from you again. So please include your phone number when you email if you want me to talk to you. I'm happy to do that. I do return phone calls, not a problem at all. Thank you.
Carrie?
Thank you, Mayor. If you all have listened to anything I've said in the last couple of years, you've heard me say many times that this town can only be successful if we operate outside the silo that we have put ourselves in for many years. And when I look at the agenda tonight and I see some of the things that are on here, it dawns on me that we are operating outside of that silo. Our mayor and our town manager are doing an amazing job of working collaboratively with other communities, of reaching out to resources that can be available to us at either free or reduced cost. And so I just want to make sure that, I'm sure the citizens do recognize it, but I just want to call out that our mayor and our town manager are working great together. They're doing good work for Oak Island. They're reaching out and finding opportunities for us. And Mayor and Catherine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You took all my good words, so.
Great, Bob.
But what I'm gonna, I will like to bring up, in deference to Councilman Martin, is that hopefully on Thursday, we can add to our agenda is a continued discussion, even though we voted four to one, a continued discussion about the gravel. And I believe that we were misguided, we got some erroneous information, and I believe a retroactive application of this, using today's ordinance, somebody who's happened twenty or thirty years ago, I question, A, the, the integrity of that, and it really doesn't go to the heart of who we are, right? We're loving, caring, we support everybody that's here, everybody in the community. And we sent a clear signal, in my opinion, that that's not the case, because we just, was it, to use my, my grandmother's saying, you threw the baby out with the, with the bathwater. And that's what happened, in my opinion, and hopefully, that there's an opportunity to have a discussion on Thursday, and to see if, you know, maybe we did miss something when we, when we voted. So that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Bill?
Lagerhead baseball. Three thousand people were there for a game last week. It's a fun place to go. Between innings, they're doing fun things. If you haven't been out there, go out there. It's Oak Island's Lagerhead baseball team. Let, let's support them. Like Councilman Martin, Beach Day, fireworks, wonderful day, way to go, Oak Island, so proud of everything. I see that Carrie Lenson is still here. Last week, last month, Carrie, you talked about plastic shovels. Wheels of government usually move slow. To all of our surprise, the town manager has put plastic shovels on the agenda for this month, so bravo. Also, like so many other people, my heart aches for people in Texas. They sent their babies off to camp that they looked forward to for months, and they never got to speak to their babies again, so that, that is overwhelming. That, that's devastating. So please lift those people up in prayer, they, they definitely need it. Lastly, I want to say, we can live with scars, but we cannot live with open wounds. I'll do my part on the scars, and I'm gonna ask everybody else to do their part on the scars, and let's get rid of some of these scars and open wounds and text messages and emails and putting gasoline on fires. We can live with scars, but not with open wounds. That's all I have.
John?
I'm happy to echo the praise for staff for the Fourth of July events. It's a standard that, of excellence that was met once again, and as, as has been suggested, many hands make light the work, and there are many people to thank, so we thank you on behalf of the town. Undoubtedly, you've all noticed the proliferation of golf carts, and it has engendered some safety and traffic management concerns. To the best of our knowledge, and our data is inadequate at the present time, but we have fifteen hundred carts registered here, probably arguably from vendors coming in outside of the town, another thousand or more. And so this is going to be a management issue going forward. Unfortunately, North Carolina law is not permissive for local municipalities with respect to LSVs and golf carts, so there are restrictions that we're working around. I've been in contact with all the members of key staff, starting with Chief Morris and the manager, Public Works, Economic Development, and clearly, we have a need for a long-term management plan that will be approved legally, that will help us to maintain a safe environment. And so we've talked a little bit about creating new routes for golf carts, we've talked about different kind of parking schemes. We're hopeful that this can be folded into the streetscape, which is coming up, and so those plans are currently in development, and we left the conversation by saying, okay, we need to give this further thought, because if we do nothing, three years from now, we're gonna have five thousand golf carts here, and so on. It is, as you know, exploding. And in so doing, we don't want to cut off access to our business community in the CR, and we don't want to deprive anybody of their liberty to drive a golf cart, but we want to have the streets that are safe and a management system that works. So we're working on that, Mayor, and when there is a detail, probably early in the fall, we'll bring it back to the entirety of council, and of course, to you.
Perfect. Kudos. My report is pretty simple. I've been working with Catherine and the staff at UNCW to bring two proposals tonight that will address under new business, and I'm very excited about those opportunities. You heard of them tonight. And the latter one that we spoke less about, in the event you're not staying till then, because we're about to break, is around a regional sand management plan. And this three-year study, we've been invited to participate in, hopefully council will see the benefit of it, but it clearly does not work when we, in the southeastern Brunswick County, when we're, each municipality is managing sand from border to border. There's no continuous plan. It doesn't necessarily look at the same data. It's costly. We could be cost-sharing and dividing the costs of mobilization and demobilization, which is a huge, I mean, it's millions of dollars to mobilize and demobilize. So I'm really very excited to, in such a short period of time, from a year and a half ago, when I was part of a panel discussion, to, to talk about the pros and cons of regional sand management, to today, just a year and a half later, and largely because of UNCW and the work of the marine engineering program, we now have, hopefully, fingers crossed, the study funded by National Wildlife Federation, or actually Feder, National Federation of Wildlife Foundation. We have been invited to submit a grant, and I imagine that that will get funded. It's really a tremendous project. Also, the opportunity for the community to work along the ICW to find measures that will benefit and help to stem our erosion along the ICW. It's really an exciting project. I particularly like the educational element of it, and the hands-on for our community, those opportunities. I echo Bill's comments about Lagerhead baseball. We're still in second place. We lost last night after a winning streak of eight, and it's really some tremendous baseball. It can be grit-your-teeth frustrating, but they've managed to pull some games out, the bottom of the ninth inning for wins, and it's, it's just a lot of fun, and it's good respiratory exercise as well, good respiratory therapy. Also, kudos to the town for the January, I mean, June, excuse me, July 1st efforts. That was terrific. But I also want to applaud the town for taking a huge step forward. We heard Hallie Willis tonight speak to all of the work that she and Matt Kertlin and our manager has put into laying the groundwork for commercial development, because that is just so pivotal to keeping our tax rate low. And when you look at Southport with a tax rate of thirty-one cents, and then you look at Oak Island with our tax rate, yes, there are fees that are associated with that, or in addition to that, I should say, but we are really very fortunate as a community, and I applaud our council for the budget, for the strategic plan, and as well as, as Catherine, who brought the strategic plan to us. This is, these are giant steps for Oak Island, and I'm really proud to be part of all of this happening. So that will conclude our council reports. If we could take a ten-minute break, we promise to be back at 8:18. If, if you drift, we will find you, council. We are back from break. Thank you very much for staying close to 8:18, it's only 8:21. We'll move on to consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are the 4/8, twenty-five minutes, the 4/24, twenty, yeah, 4/24, twenty-five minutes. We have pulled 5/13, twenty-five to discuss, and then the 4/29, twenty-five minutes. Is there a motion, council, to accept? Go ahead.
There's other consent agenda items as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Consideration of a MOU with the NC Department of Commerce Rural Economic Development Division. That's about developing the economic development strategic, strategic plan and a resolution requesting the services of the NC Main Street and Rural Planning Center. We had a presentation, which meeting was that, May?
May, I believe, yes.
May meeting? And then approval of a post issuance compliance policy procedures for complying with continuing disclosure obligations rule, consideration of contract with Weeks Marine for Beach Nourishment Project for next year, consideration of a proposed amendment to Section 16-17 and 16-18 of the Towns Code of Ordinances, having to do with fire prevention protection and the 2025 Fire Fee Schedule amendments. So council, if you have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the amendments that Lisa Stites provided early, I would like to hear that, please.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended by Councilwoman Carter, and also as amended by the clerk.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? Excellent. Thank you. Five votes. So items removed from the consent agenda, those are the minutes from 5/13, twenty-five. Who would like to begin that discussion?
Yeah, I've got a written statement I'd like to discuss if I could, present. On May 13th, 2025, former planning board member Melanie Morgan submitted a three-page email to town council, which appears in the printed minutes from tonight, from the May 13th town council meeting. I'd like to read and turn into tonight's minutes a response from Councilwoman Carter and myself, which provide clarity to Morgan's email, which is riddled with false information. The words she chose to use are sadly lies and fabrications of her being treated unfairly. She resigned from the planning board on August 5th, 2024, and nearly one year later, she alleges she was coerced into resigning. She alleges that she was targeted, that town council is guilty of vague improprieties. In addition to Councilwoman Carter and myself, others on town council are acting unethically. To provide context, as a member of the Realtor, Builder, Developer profession, Ms. Morgan supports the construction of 5,000-square-foot beachfront homes, while the majority of Oak Island residents, including Councilwoman Carter and myself, seek to regulate their size. She supports 12-bedroom, 12-bathroom, flat-top, roof, 5,000-square-foot investment properties owned by out-of-state investors who are not vested in the best interests of Oak Island as a resident-oriented town. At the July 18th, 2024, planning meeting, planning board meeting, Ms. Morgan spent nearly twenty minutes sharing her personal opinion of large houses, stating the town council's recommendations to the planning board were misguided. She finished up with a rant accusing Councilwoman Carter and I- She finished up with a rant accusing Councilwoman Carter and I of racism and using discriminatory language with a person of color. Lastly, she stated, "I do not support any changes to our current house, high-size limits," a statement clearly in violation of her role on planning board to objectively review items passed to planning board by town council. In response to Ms. Morgan's basis accusations of discrimination and racism, Councilwoman Carter and I each filed ethics complaints against her. Attorney Norwood Blanchard, an independent arbiter appointed by the town of Oak Island, reviewed our complaints and concluded that Ms. Morgan's allegations were, quote, "not motivated by a good-faith desire to address discrimination," unquote, and that her, quote, "assertions of discrimination appear to be disingenuous and self-serving," end quote. He ruled her complaint was baseless, groundless, and motivated by a personal vendetta. During the course of Mr. Norwood's investigation, Ms. Morgan chose to resign from planning board on her own volition. There's no need for discussion or debate tonight. It's simply our joint response to Morgan's email. We want to ensure the record includes accurate information that the public understands the fact behind Ms. Morgan's email of May 13, 2025.
If you'd please share that with our clerk. I would appreciate it.
Of course.
Any other comments from council? I hope we can put this to rest and move on with more current issues.
Before we do that, just, I want to be clear on what we're doing. Councilman Chulo just read a statement. Are we incorporating that into the minutes?
Into tonight's minutes.
I think he's asking for it to be.
Correct. Not to amend the May 13 minutes, but to put it in tonight's minutes.
To add to.
Hmm?
Okay. I just want to be clear on what we're doing.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And Councilor Black, I raised this question to Madam Clerk and to the town manager because our minutes are supposed to be a true record of what occurred at a meeting. And for there to be read and to be submitted to the record, so many false statements in one person's submission, my question was, how do we, how do we deal with that? Do we just print it even though we know that there are false statements in there? And perhaps our attorney can give us some guidance on what we do with folks' submitted comments because we don't have any control over what they submit. So, and yet, it becomes part of the record to be read as truthful.
I think what you're doing is appropriate. I mean, think about every person who speaks to you during every meeting and testifies. You can't constantly be correcting them or pointing out what's wrong or disagreeing or even if they're factually wrong, even if they're unintentionally wrong about something. So, I think there is a policy, right, the rules of procedure, that if people submit comments to be read and entered into the, into the record as part of public comments, that's your policy? And you don't edit them or go through them or redact them? But I think what you have done in this next meeting to kind of address them is probably the best way to do it.
Yeah, there were assertions in those same minutes that had nothing, I mean, that implicated me in all of that discussion, and I wasn't. So, I'm not sure what that was all about, that I, there's nothing I think needed to be corrected. It's minimal.
So, in the May 13 meeting, there is a page and a half inserted from Melanie Morgan and Bob's wanting to put in whatever he read next to it or behind it or wherever.
It would be in today's minutes.
In today's. We're not going to amend that.
Yeah.
We'll just leave it for tonight if we could, please.
No problem.
So, is there any action that needs to happen?
We would still need a motion to approve the May minutes.
The, okay, the 5.
Yeah.
And does that need to include Bob's?
No, because that would go into tonight's minutes.
Okay. All right. So, do we have a motion to approve the 5?
Before we do, let me make sure, because I want to make sure Bob's getting what he wants on this. Melanie Morgan's statement is in the May 13 minutes.
We pulled it out of the consent agenda.
We're going to approve it now. And then, next month or whenever, we're going to approve Bob's statement. I'm sure, yeah, I can vote for that.
We okay? Mark, you look flummoxed.
Let me, if I may, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mark.
No, go ahead.
I want to ask council further questions. So, we're going to put this in the minutes for this evening, all well and good. There's a reference to an attorney's investigation and an attorney's findings. Should the actual report and findings from the attorney be incorporated in the minutes as well? Or are you not doing that?
No, that's attorney-client privilege. We're not allowed to do that.
Okay. So, you're quoting part of it.
I did receive his approval.
Okay.
To quote, but not to release it in its full version.
Okay. Excellent. All right. You're covered.
So, is there a motion to approve?
Wait, Mark had a.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I guess I'm just confused by the purpose of trying to, I mean, it was also sent as an email. That email is now public record, and our town clerk curates that. So, it goes into the files forever, and anybody can make a public records request and get that email. Are we also saying that, that we want to sit here and refute emails that come in about topics or people? I guess I'm just confused, the purpose behind what we're, what we're doing.
Lydia, I'm going to pass that to you.
Well, I think Councilman Chulo and Councilwoman Carter want to put something on the record that indicates that they feel like the comments at that meeting of May, whatever the date is, were inaccurate. Okay? And so, I think that's the purpose of this because the way our minutes are written, they're practically, they're very, very detailed. So, anyone who wants to hear what they have to say about last month's meetings can look at the minutes from tonight, right? But in particular, you know, I think to your, to your question, Councilwoman Martin, you know, about public hearings, speakers, and written comments, you know, you all, we could have the prerogative to adjust your, you know, rules of procedure. If you'd like to do something different and not, not have these be part of the minutes, maybe just have them on file with the clerk, or not tonight, probably, but it might be something that you all might want to think about adjusting if you all think it's something that you might want to address at a future time.
So, I guess, here's my dilemma. So, that would potentially include emails from one council member to another that has false information in it. We could openly discuss it and refute that and have a new record created that says, "This email is full of lies." Is that, that's basically what I just heard you say.
Well, I think the purpose, what they're doing tonight is because of minutes of your duly constituted meeting last month, right? And so, they're responding to something that was read at your meeting last month. They're making comments tonight with regard to what happened at your meeting last month. I think, I think that's different than something outside of a meeting. That's why I kind of gave the example of someone who comes up here and just, where do they come up and spew off all kinds of things that aren't true, which I've seen happen a lot over the years? And you kind of listen to it, and then you just kind of go on to the next meeting, and it's in the minutes that they spoke and that's what they said, right? But I guess it's up to this council how closely you want to address those kind of comments that you want to.
If I could, this was, this was not a, it was not a general email, Mark. This was an email that was sent to us and to the town clerk with the request to put it in the meeting, make it a meeting record. So, that makes it very different from any, all the other emails that we got.
I would disagree. It's an email that came to the town clerk. She's not going to, she's not going to curate that email differently because it says, "This is a comment to share with town council." The rules of the email coming into a local government, that curation doesn't change because of the topic or the desire of how it's read into the minutes. If that were true, oh, my gosh, poor Lisa would be sitting over there, month to month, consumed with trying to classify email, you know, by category and how it's curated. That's not how North Carolina law works, to my knowledge. So, I guess that's where I get confused because we don't, we don't interact with the public at the podium in real time, nor have we ever sat here and gone back and said, "Oh, well, two months ago, John Doe said something at the podium, and I want to enter into the record that everything they said was a lie." We just don't do that kind of behavior. It's like, information comes in, it gets curated, it's available for a public records request, and I don't know. I'm just very confused at what the end goal is here. Are we continuing to try to publicly, you know, shame someone just because they made comments? I mean, we make comments. I try to be as factual as I can in my debates. I quote general statute, or I refer to town ordinances, or I've done the research and I bring factual data or statistics to the table. Sometimes council members, I think, just make stuff up. And do we come back in another month and rewrite that or refute that because we didn't like what a council member said publicly? No. I just, I'm just very concerned that, you know, this issue was put to bed, the person resigned, they're living their life, but yet, here we are dredging this up yet again. For what purpose? I just don't understand the purpose.
That's, that's the problem. We're not dredging it up. This particular individual keeps dredging it up by asking for 80,000 emails, by submitting things like this. As far as I'm concerned, it was done when our attorney reviewed the ethics complaint and said, "It's done." And at that point, he was not allowed to speak to her because she had retained counsel. She now complains that nobody ever came back to her. Well, that's her fault. That's not, that's not the attorney's fault. He can't, he can't speak to her. So, I bristle at the fact that you're suggesting that we're continuing to dredge this up when, in fact, the other party is the one who is continuing to dredge this up. And whether, whether it gets put into the minutes tonight or not doesn't really matter to me. It's recorded, it's out there, and so, the public can go back and look and see, you know, what our, what our, what my position, Councilor Chulo's position was on the inaccurate statements that were made against me, him, and the mayor.
Well, I spoke with Norwood on this subject back in May, when this email was sent in to town council. I would like to clarify, and I have the email from Norwood, I can submit it into the record if you want proof. Norwood did, in fact, now admits that he responded, but he only responded to individuals within the town of Oak Island. He did not copy Mrs. Morgan or her attorney in his response. So, in all fairness, Mrs. Morgan has been sitting out there for months, waiting for a response that she never received. And Norwood will sit here and testify that that is true, that he sent an email to the town of Oak Island, not to everybody. It was a small collection of people that received that email, and it never left town hall. So, we are at fault for not reaching out to Mrs. Morgan and say, "The attorney evaluated the complaint. Here's the result. Thank you, have a nice day." So...
Well, I'd like to, if that hasn't happened and should have happened, we were told it couldn't happen. If that, in fact, is not true, then I believe that action should be taken so that she gets the response that she is due.
I agree. And that's, that's my concern, is that, yes, this was entered into the record back in May, it's July. No one has come to the podium, we've received no more emails, she's still without an answer because Norwood's response never made it out of town hall. So, I think if we want to clean this up, we need to reengage Norwood, figure out the appropriate delivery mechanism to send her his report, his results, whatever you want to call it, his conclusion. I think that will kind of close this out. Because I agree, we need to close it out, but I want to make sure we're not closing it out by just keep lobbing hand grenades, you know, and see which one shuts up first. Let's get re-engaged with our attorney and close it out. That's all I'm saying.
Catherine, is Norwood still under contract with us? So, that's something you can manage?
I can absolutely reach out to him.
Thank you.
Lydia, if I need to.
Sure. Is that good? Can we move on?
No. Actually, there's another piece to this. I'm fine with that resolution. When we redrafted the ethics complaint procedure, and this case occurred, obviously, the communication to the party alleging certain things was, and the result was an exoneration, wasn't communicated. But beyond that, if I recall the letter, there was a standard there that was non-linguistic. It was behavior. And we were going to investigate how to incorporate that with our previous council. And we never got an answer. So, that policy has a gap in it, right? And that's what we're looking at here. It's got a communication gap, not following through its results. It also has a behavior standard, right? Because the language permitted by the First Amendment is pretty broad. But behavior, especially behavior in a public capacity, is a different matter. We don't have that standard. And that's, unfortunately, Mr. Eads was going to create that, and it's fallen through the cracks. So, while we're fixing things, let's fix that.
Norwood's recommendation, just Lydia, for your knowledge, his recommendation that we not talk, we don't, we call it something other than code of ethics, that we focus on the behavior, and we call it code of ethical behavior, because that's really what we're trying to manage, not someone's personal ethics and beliefs and the like.
Right.
So, it's a function of behavior and how they act out on whatever their ethics are. So, we're not here to govern anyone's ethics. We're here to manage behavior of those who are representing Oak Island.
I think we owe it to ourselves and to the community to revisit this policy and make sure that it serves the purpose we intended it to serve and make sure that, hopefully, we won't have further complaints. But if we have them, they're resolved in a speedy, effective way by our council or other council. I'm not sure if we're going to outsource. So, there's some work to be done there.
Okay. All right. You're good? Can we, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I don't see that we had a motion or approval of the minutes.
That's what I'm, I'm going back to that. But I wanted to make sure this discussion was done.
Yes, ma'am.
So, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of 5/13 25?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? One, four to one. We have no committee appointments, is that correct?
That's correct.
Just straight of reports. Catherine?
I have a lot of fun with this report, so I'm going to get right to my section, and I'll have a lot of department speakers tonight. Just very briefly, the beach nourishment, annual beach survey has begun. I know Mike's been putting that out publicly as well. It should start this week. It'll take a couple of weeks, but you may see these survey ships off of our shore. Please pay attention to those. Very quick update on code enforcement. I'm pleased to announce the inspection of the entire alliance, the alliance report has been completed. We are 100% complete. That's the status of the results. And of course, we're moving on carefully through the Right-Away and Street Ends new initiative passed at the June 10 meeting. Upcoming events, Development Services Stakeholders Meeting on July 15 at 2 o'clock. Everyone is welcome, all stakeholders in that process. There are signs announcing it. We've been soliciting for questions. Anyone that would like to have their questions submitted ahead of time, or they can bring them that day as well. OakIslandNC.gov survey. You can still send your questions in. Also, the bike plan, the open house, is scheduled for July 30. That is moving along nicely. It's 5 to 7. It's 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And if Chief Price will come up, we want to give you some exciting department highlights from the fire department.
Madam Mayor, Council. Y'all want some good news?
All right.
On March 3rd of this year, we had the ISO Insurance Services Office, which is done, the state fire marshal, come in and do a ratings inspection on the fire department. Just to let you know, it is a, as y'all have heard a lot about ISO, in my presentations, it's a big task. Well, we have our rating back. I want to tell you that, in the nation, there's 37,562 rated fire departments. In North Carolina, there's about 1,748. We were rated to an ISO grade two. Our previous score was a 30, excuse, 73.95. Our grade this time turned out to be an 88. So we were really close to making that next step. There's only 2,109 fire departments nationally, there are two, there's only 139, 140 in North Carolina. The biggest thing about this, as you see up there, we are improving from a split rating from a 310 to an ISO two townwide. And that is a huge thing. I would like to thank council, manager, staff, and especially the guys on the fire department. They worked really hard to make this happen, we're very proud of this. And, it's, we don't chase an ISO grade, we set a level of service, and the grade reflects the job we do. And, they did a really good job. So, thank the guys, thank the staff, thank my admin, thank everybody, because this is a big accomplishment, so, thank you.
Excellent.
We were a strong... Last year, we were a strong level three.
So we, I don't know if it was strong, but we were a 3/10, so the areas outside of the five miles were in a non-rated area. At 70, you become a three, we were a 73, let me make sure I'm telling you this right, 73 and a half, 73.95. At 80, you become a two, and we were 88. At 90, you become a one.
Congratulations.
So, yeah, really strong work. Thank y'all.
Great job.
Thank you, Chief.
Great job.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. More exciting news, we are starting a new townwide website project. I know Mike's behind the curtains, but he's been spearheading this, and we're really excited to kick this refresh off. With a new platform, we'll also be able to have our contact forums, called open forums, which will give us greater ability to receive and track and make sure we give feedback to any citizen complaints and concerns that come in. That has been very, very difficult, and with Mike's help, we'll have new software with the new budget that'll allow us to begin to track that better. And, another exciting program, to kick off the Adopt a Tree program, Bryce is going to come present that.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor.
We've got Margaret Johnson here with us, with the EAC. I'll let her go first.
I just want to say that Bryce had the EAC at Trees, and we are delighted to be part of this. We want to help in any way we can, we've had enthusiastic response from the public at Arbor Day and another function that we held. People want to get involved, they want to take care of these trees, and we want to help them figure out how they can do it. So, thank you so much, Bryce, for including us. So we would like to support this project, as we have been already, and to proceed as Bryce will direct us.
Yeah, we decided, you know, with all the trees we're planting around the island, we're spending a lot of money, you know, watering trees, a lot of time, it's eating into our budget, stormwater budget, other things. We are collecting some fees from the tree budget, for people cutting down trees and, you know, without permits or whatever, cutting heritage trees. We don't want to see that, you know? And that money's going back to education, to buy more trees. So, what this program, the Adopt a Tree program will do, will allow the town to be able to purchase trees, if they buy a tree, or if they adopt a tree, depending on, there's two different methods here, whichever one they want to do. But, that's going to help us save money, one way or another. We can buy, so, there's two different programs here, they just like one of two ways. First off, you can be a tree provider, that's any elderly person, you know, or whatever, it can be a business, it can be in memory of someone, you can do a one-time donation of $1,000, and that'll reserve the tree. It'll get a name, you can name it after the business, again, a loved one, whomever, a family. No further cost after that commitment, it covers the planting, it covers the mulching, it covers the watering bag, and the price of watering for two years. So the tree's fully established. So that's, that's a wonderful, it's a one-time deal. There also, then there's a tree manager. So a tree manager will be someone that goes out and adopts a tree, which Margaret's helped me with a lot. We've probably got, what, 25 to 30 people already signed up, ready to go on this. We're just getting everything all in motion, everything online. So there's no initial cost, you know, for 24 months, they'll make you sign a little commitment that they're going to water it. And, you know, the average cost now is $9 a week. So we're saving that money back into our trees, to buy more trees. In addition to help restoring and growing the trees, both options, you know, they'll be able to have a tree adoption registry, trees personalized with their name, like I said, available, and it'll be on the town website. And we'll have a, also have a story map. So it kind of gives people that come and move here, you know, some of our heritage trees, North Carolina trees, there's going to be a whole tree webpage, it'll be OakIslandNC forward slash trees. So, it'll help everybody understand more about what trees we have, what trees we're able to plant, what trees, you know, are local. And, the story map will kind of give them that guidance. Physical sign, trees will be included in a physical sign, it's located in town hall, we're going to put one here. Two nice little maps, and their names will be listed vertically on there, what, you know, the family or whoever has adopted that tree. So that's going to be really neat. People can come in and see that, you know, everybody's helping, so it's helping the community, we get an interaction, we're getting a lot of feedback. So, we want to make other people interested in what we're doing. So with this said, either way, they get a decal and a t-shirt. This is a decal, they'll get a magnetic decal they can put on their car, or they can put it on their refrigerator, and then they'll get a t-shirt, one t-shirt per purchase. They have the option to buy more at $30 apiece, but we thought it was kind of a good one, say, tree manager, give them a little bit of, you know, excitement there. But, we're committed to preserving legacy and the beauty of Oak Island, ensuring it lives up to its name, you know, for generations to come. We've done great things so far, thank you guys for all your help. We have, we had 100% of our trees we planted in February, we had 100% of them live. Every tree lived, so all 100, 200 trees we planted, they lived. And then, I also got a call the other day, the same people, Pennerly Farms, they gave us another 100 trees, and we have those now at the airport facility for $0, they were free. So we have more area to plant. We just have to water them till the fall, till we can get them in the ground. But yeah, we've got 100 free trees, and we're looking for wonderful places to put them. But thank you guys for your time, and the program is awesome, so, y'all have a wonderful evening.
Excellent.
I want to say one thing before I leave, I want to just add on to what the mayor said. As far as this project with UNCW, you've already got a baseline for the organizing residents. Three years ago, this council approved Living Shoreline with the EAC. And we've been out at Veterans Park, cleaning it, putting in oyster bags, mostly in affiliation with the Coastal Federation. But, we stand ready, willing, and able to help organize citizens, to do whatever needs to be done, to make this a project that expands beyond Veterans Park. So, please, please vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good work, Bryce.
More good news to come. We should have done this while the other 80, 90 residents were here.
Do this stuff first.
They're watching it from home, I'm sure.
The good reports. Helen is here to give us our year-end report, and how we ended up the year at June 30th on our finances. Helen?
Yes, and more good news, we made it through the year. And didn't overextend our budget, so... Okay, so our general fund revenues for the year, total revenues were realized at 96.2% of the budget. Our ad valorem tax revenues were over 100% of what we budgeted. Local sales tax revenues were over 120% of what we budgeted. The fire district fee revenues were over 100% as well. We are still waiting on some money from FEMA, we approximate that at 1.6. It's really hard to get a definite answer on that, but that's pretty close. And then, we earned interest last year at an average of 4%, which gave us 1.2 million over anticipated revenues for that. Our credit rating, which was a wonderful thing that happened to us, we increased from an A to a double A, which means good things for us in the future. The fund balance continues to remain strong, and the town's general fund balance is still in compliance with the North Carolina General Statute 159-8, and well over the town's internal policy to maintain a minimum fund balance of 40%. Our expenses for the year for the general fund, there were no departments over budget, and our expenditures were approximately 81.6% of the budget. We have encumbered $671,754, that's not completely spent, and the purchase orders will carry forward to the next year. And all debt and lease payments were made as scheduled and on time, and we did not acquire any additional debt for the last fiscal year. This is just a snapshot of the revenues and expenses, a synopsis, so it gives you all the different avenues of that. End of year enterprise funds highlighted, there were no fund expenditures that were over budget. We collected 97% of our budgeted water revenues, 97% of our sewer revenues. Stormwater revenues were at 91% of what we budgeted. Solid waste revenue was 104% of what we budgeted. Golf revenues were up 116% of our budgeted revenues, that was a nice thing. And peer revenue was up over 109% of our budgeted revenue, and over $21,000 over the prior year in revenues. Parking revenue was realized at 120% of what was budgeted, and we did make all of our wastewater debt payments. We made them in full and on time. I did a snapshot of the parking revenues comparison for your viewing. We were up in 2024 over 2023, and right now, we are still projecting that we will be above in 2025 versus 2024. Accommodation tax fund, the revenue from the 3% of the total room occupancy tax was 131% of budgeted, or $823,000 more than anticipated. This fund is intended to fund the budgeted tourist-related activities for the town, and then, any remaining funds after that are also transferred to the beach nourishment fund. The beach tax fund, the revenue of, this is from the 2% room occupancy tax, and it was at 131% of what we budgeted, or 546,000 more than we anticipated. The budgeted expenses in this fund are to pay for doom maintenance, and any funds are also to be transferred to the beach nourishment fund. And then the beach nourishment fund, this revenue comes as a transfer from all the other funds, so it was at 102% of the budget. And it is utilized to account for the continued activity of the beach nourishment, which is scheduled for this upcoming year.
Just a quick question, if I can. What was the total combined 5% accommodation tax revenue? You showed the increases of 800 and 500, but what was the total combined revenue under the accommodation tax for the last fiscal year?
I cannot quote that number off the top of my head, but I'll be glad to get it for you. I can't remember, and I didn't bring the budget book with me, to know.
If you could send that to council, that would be great.
Yes, thank you.
Helen, when we get $823,552 more than budgeted in accommodation tax, does that offset the amount we've set aside for beach renourishment, or does it just go into the beach renourishment fund?
It goes into the beach nourishment fund. You know, some of that does offset some of the expenses that we had in there related to activities for tourists, you know, as far as ocean rescue, or things in that nature, so...
And then, any excess in each of those funds would stay in that fund?
Right, it rolls over.
It's not what we had transferred. So, we'll have a little bit of cushion left after our nourishment project this year, thank goodness.
And then we start growing for the next one.
And we'll start all over again.
Yes.
Excellent report. Yeah, no, that's outstanding.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Lot to smile about tonight.
Yeah, we need to do this part early.
Yeah, this is the good part.
Under presentation.
We are, we are working away, this staff is fantastic. Again, connect with us any way you like, the mobile app, usage is soaring. Get your alerts, text the easy button, or read your current. That's all I have.
Excellent. That's great news. Doing a great job. You and all the staff, I can't thank you enough for everything you do, day in, day out. And, I think council certainly is behind all of that. There is no old business, so we go right to new business. We have three items. One is consideration of amendment, of an amendment to Section 14-142 of the town's Code of Ordinances. Chief?
No, it's, it's all right, yeah, it's just an amendment to Section 14-142. We previously said holes dug on the beach are required to be attended at all times and filled prior to leaving the beach. This provides some more clarity to that, and requires that they should be no deeper than 12 inches. And shovels shall not be used on the beach strand, other than toy shovels, unless authorized in our maintenance on the beach. Any hole dug in accordance with our town ordinances shall be attended at all times and filled back in before leaving the beach, or by 6:00 PM the same day, whichever comes first.
How do we enforce this, and what is the fine if they violate it?
Okay, now you can jump in.
The enforcement would be done, just like the other stuff that we do on the beach strand, through the BSU team. As they go up and down, we had discussed, you know, we will give a certain time for people to realize the ordinance and do some education. And once that goes, then the BSU team can actually issue the ordinance violation, I believe. Chief Morris, $50 on that one? So it'd be a $50, you know, ordinance violation that they could issue the ticket for.
So how are we going to let the public know that this is an ordinance change in the middle of a very busy summer?
Good old Mike Emery. We'll push it out. And we figured we'd give at least a month of pushing it out, and letting everybody know this is the change. I know this doesn't come lightly, because a lot of people like to dig holes in the beach, and we have had a tremendous issue with that this year. Chief Morris sent me a picture the other day of a guy that all you could see was from his head up. And when I went out and investigated it, there were six other holes in the beach, it looked like, you know, bombs had gone off. I don't know why, it seems to be a tremendous thing to dig a great big hole in the beach and then sometimes leave it. Our biggest concern is the safety of young kids and everything. Chief Sillings and I went and attended one one day while public works had to come fill it in. Of course, the kids were standing next to it, and if they fall in, if they have a, if it collapses on them, that sand is very heavy. One cubic foot of sand is, what was it, Chris? 100 pounds per cubic foot on the sand, so if it collapses on them, it's a rescue, it's recovery. So that's, that's one of the biggest dangers and one of the biggest things why we wanted to do this. The second is, is the safety of our responders, is...
things why we wanted to do this. The second is, is the safety of our responders. Is they have, we've been entirely really busy in the ocean this year, averaging two rescues a day. They're coming across the beach. They're paying attention to the people that are in distress on the ocean. They don't need to be looking for a four-foot hole that they're going to fall in. So, there's a lot of things about this. We give it a lot of consideration inside.
So, we have a whole new population every week, and they don't get our normal, I mean, our residents will learn about the no holes, right, or the limited, the limited holes. But the residents, the changeover every week.
But it's just like everything else we do here, is we educate. We've done a lot of educating with the BSU teams this year. In May, we filled in 115 holes. So, we talk to people when we do that, especially the ones around this. In June, it was 89 different holes, and that's substantial enough where we need to go fill in. You know, 209, I believe it was, discussions with people about being in the emergency accesses just last month. And so, the guys, not only are they patrolling, looking for the people that might be in distress, they are talking to a lot of people. There was over 750 contacts made last month alone, talking to people about, hey, watch out for the rip current. Hey, this is what the flag is. Are you sure you fill that hole in? So, that's where, that's where we're going to focus this, is if this passes, we will do the education and make sure, hey, guys, you know, you're not supposed to be digging that hole. That's the biggest thing, educate.
Right. Excellent. You've got this.
All right. Any other questions?
Chief, and the BSU has discretion, right? Rather than not, they are going to, you know, immediately find it. Just more about education, assuming that they're in agreement. It's, they'll fill the hole in, and they move on.
Yes. And when Chief Morris and I talked about the combination and everything this year, is we wanted to focus a lot more on the education piece of it. And we have. There's been a lot more education done with the two different groups that are out there. Tremendous amount more education done. We're not getting any more really contacts than the previous groups. We're educating a lot more. So...
All right, council. So, thank you very much, chief. If there are no more questions, there's a motion on page 69.
Make that motion, Madam Mayor. A motion to approve the amendment to Section 14-142 for ends digging holes on beach as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Next is consideration of participating in the southeastern North Carolina Regional Management Study. This is a three-year study by UNCW that we spoke about earlier. It is no cost to Oak Island. So, any incidental costs that Catherine and I might incur by going to three regional meetings that are noted on page 71, is, those costs will be covered. Of course, it's a short trip for us to Wilmington. But the, the good thing about this study, it is by invitation from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. So, they're anticipating funding this. It's the data that's collected is the foundation for what we hope will be a major step forward in developing a regional sand management plan, one that is equitable as well as effective, and which we currently do not have in terms of equity. It's, it doesn't stop at the beach. It's building community capacity. So, they're looking at frameworks for supporting and prioritizing nature-based solutions in any shoreline. That, for us, it would be Oak Island, but the focus is on southeastern Brunswick County. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them for you, what they're asking for from us. And this first is a letter of support that they will need by July 15th to attach to the grant application.
Do you need a motion, Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
I suppose the motion would be to send a letter of support. So, I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor? I appreciate that very much. And the last item is the memorandum of understanding, which was presented earlier. Again, if there are any questions, I'm happy to, to answer them. But the, I think the big thing, this is the umbrella, the handshake that we will work together. And there will be a plan that will come to you later. So, the first, this motion is to approve or accept UNCW's memorandum of understanding.
That's a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned.
Make that motion, Madam Mayor. We accept it. And with the comment that this is exactly how things should work, right? We're transferring authority to you. Perfectly legitimate, all upfront. It's a great project. Thank you for spearheading it. And the motion's on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? It's also unanimous?
Just a quick comment. I didn't, I didn't want to slow down the vote, but I didn't mention it when they were here. They're more than welcome to come to see my wife and I's property, to see our living shoreline. I don't know, you know, if they want to come see it, they can come see it. Doesn't...
I'll let them know that. There will be, I'm sure, a number of walkthroughs. We, earlier, several months ago, we kind of toured all of the public accessible places to see what feasibility there was. But I didn't have permission to go on your property, but...
Well, you have my permission.
Thank you. Especially when we get to the point where we want to begin to engage other homeowners. I think your project would be a great asset to help promote other homeowners doing something similar. So, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think it's important for property owners to understand, there is an alternative to a bulkhead. The bulkhead isn't always 100% guaranteed the answer. Let somebody look at it and give you some advice. I know we were elated to find out that the bulkhead would have been the wrong thing for us to put in. So...
And expensive to boot.
Exactly.
I wish we could, I wish we could get the word out there, because today I found out about a bulkhead that's going in just west of you, another one. And it's, it's the contractors who are putting in the docks and the boat lifts. And they think the only solution is to put in a bulkhead. And I said to the property owner next to it, what this is going to cause on your property is greater erosion once that bulkhead goes in. And they're just marching down the waterway doing it. I wish we had a way to communicate with them.
Well, perhaps one of, one strategy we could invoke is in partnership with UNCW. They have a, well, it's not UNCW's, but there is a scale that, or a range of erosion protection for shorelines that ranges from green to gray. And the darker the gray is, the more, what's the word I want to use? The less green it is, certainly. But we're talking about concrete. So, the kind of batten board kind of bulkheads that are oftentimes used on Oak Island are somewhere in between. And there are places where that's appropriate and places where it's not at all appropriate. So, maybe we can get them to speak to some of those companies.
Once they get here, they'll start educating us.
Absolutely.
And Catherine, at the development services meeting you're having, do you think it would be appropriate to bring up this subject as one of the agenda items? I'm not sure who the audience is going to be, but something to...
This is contractors and developers and landscapers and pool installers and things like that about our ordinances. We can find a way, see if we can put it in there, but it's not really the type of meeting that this was intended for. We'll see if we can continue to educate.
Thank you.
Would you like a motion to adjourn, Madam?
I would. I wanted to thank everyone for a terrific meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, we're out of here before 9:15. Congratulations.
Take it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
I'd like to amend the previous motion to recess.
I'll second that.
All in favor? And that is to Thursday, 1:00.
At 1:00 PM.
The 10th.
FYI, I will not be here.
Ooh.
Tammy's prepping for surgery.
Or will John?
Yeah, John and I are actually...
Prepping Tammy for surgery.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I just think it's just me drinking at late.